... his name at home, and we will answer verbally to whatever our vote is. So tonight, we will have the invocation by Pastor Jerry Phillips from Sunrise Church, followed by the pledge of allegiance, who will be led tonight by Dean Velasco. I had to make sure you didn't run out on us. So ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to give you a little short biography about the pastor. You come on up and get ready. We're, you know, we'd like to have a good time here as well as, you know, be somewhat formal about getting the job done, but... So anyhow, Jerry actually has a title of associate pastor at the church, and he serves in many ways at Sunrise. Among them are, on Wednesday nights, Pastor Jerry teaches a verse-by-verse study through a book in the Bible. Well, that's a heck of a task.
Yes, sir.
And on Sundays, he teaches our new members in the class called "What's Next?" Sunrise understands we all hit a rough patch in time in life, and sometimes we need someone to help us figure things out. Isn't that the truth? With God's help, as the pastor in charge of benevolence, Pastor Jerry helps people figure out how to get beyond their rough patches. We thank you for that. And Jerry and his wife, Pat, have been part of Sunrise for over 20 years, and he has been a part of the pastoral team since April of 2019. So he's kind of a newbie at that then, huh? Well, good. And so Jerry received his bachelor of science degree in business management from Christian Heritage College in Oklahoma. So definitely a local boy, so I love to see that. Pastor Jerry leads the Sunrise Partnership with the Santee Food Bank. He also represents Sunrise in the community by getting involved with organizations like Pregnancy Care Clinic, in which he is on the Board of Directors, and he also serves as the East County Transitional Living Facility in Oklahoma. When he's not in church... Wow, it sounds like you're there a lot, though. Pastor Jerry, his favorite thing to do is long drives with his wife, Pat, golf, and watch ice hockey. You know, in your biography here, it didn't say you picked a team, though, that you root for.
The Gulls.
I imagine it's the Gulls, right? All right, great. And then also, of course, watching his grandchildren play high school sports. And that's wonderful. Thank you for being here tonight. So I'm going to ask everyone to please rise for the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Pastor.
Thank you, Mayor. Almighty God, you are our creator, our sustainer. You are our light in our fortress. You are our wisdom and our strength. We ask for your guiding hand to lead us through this meeting. May we approach our tasks with wisdom, and may we approach our members with respect. May our conduct create an environment of cooperation and kindness. Thank you for helping us to accomplish our work this day. Thank you for calling us to serve this great city, Santee. We ask all these things in your powerful and holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Mayor.
Dino?
Ready to begin? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated.
Casey Ash, can you turn your camera on and your mic, please?
All right, let's see. Tonight, we have a presentation, and this is regarding the former cup known as Santee. We're calling it the Santee City Cup now. It has two different names, though. It was once known as the Mayor's Cup, and then also known as the Jack E. Dale Cup. And so, taking over as the mayor, I decided after a while, you know what? This really belongs to the city of Santee, so how about if we call it the Santee City Cup? My colleagues agreed, and so that's what we're going to be doing tonight, is presenting that. And that's an event called Varsity Football, and that game took place between Santana and West Hills High School. And both Dustin and Rob were there.
Only Rob.
Only Rob. You didn't make it?
I did not make it that evening. That was actually my wife's birthday, and I couldn't get a pass.
Probably a better reason not to be there. So we'll have the... And who's going to make that presentation? Or the... We're going to hear something about it first? And who is that? Is that Casey?
Casey.
Casey.
Good evening, guys. Thank you for having me here tonight. I just want to express my gratitude and appreciation to the city and the council for supporting this cup for so many years. It's a great event that I know for our West Hills community really brings together a lot of different parts of the high school. It's a big night for cheerleaders, band kids, obviously football players and their family members. And this year, as always, it was a very memorable time, and I know something that, after such a tough year for high school kids, we gave them a moment that they're not going to forget on both sides there. So I appreciate the support, your support of that over the years.
Oh, great, Casey. Is there anybody here tonight to actually accept the cup?
No, sir.
I think Trotter should do it.
Okay. Well, Casey, the cup's on the table over there. I don't know if we can zoom in and look at it and show people.
Trotter, go get it.
Mr. Mayor, I'll get up and bring it to the front here.
You want to bring it over?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Go ahead.
I'm pretty familiar with it.
That's great. And why would that be that you're real familiar with that, Casey?
Well, I actually missed it. We lost the cup last year for the first time in a long time, and, you know, there's nothing like losing something to help you realize how important it is to you. So definitely nice to have it back.
That's great. Well, there's the cup. Hold that.
Turn it around, though, so some people can see all the names on it. Yeah, well, it's pretty easy to know the names, and Casey, believe you know this number. West Hills has won 22 times. Santana's only held this cup eight times. Correct, Casey?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Many, as far as I'm concerned.
And also, Councilman McNellis, we had a bet who was going to win this year, so he's paying off his bets tonight and representing West Hills High School tonight, Casey, and obviously his bet is big.
I know he's a well-dressed man, but he's never looked better.
I agree with that. I'm very proud tonight to be able to hand this off to you again, Casey. You can bring it back to school. Myself, if you know, I went to West Hills High School for a little while in my career, so to be able to hand this to you makes me very proud as a council member. Thank you.
Congratulations, guys. All those kids did a great job. They were all... I was blessed to be able to hand the trophy off to them, even though it wasn't my kid's school of Santana, but, you know. They were beside themselves, so excited. I got pummeled in there, in the crowd, and, I mean, just the excitement on their face, the sheer joy of just playing the game that they love, and this was, for a lot of them, the last game that they're going to play. And it really is just such a neat event to be at. I mean, I know it was very difficult this year for anybody to get tickets, but next year, I hope to see everybody in the city of Santee at the game and hopefully bring it back to Santana. No disrespect, Casey. You guys are awesome.
I agree.
I appreciate that, and hey, you know, we'll be trying equally hard to keep it at West Hills.
Amen.
So we'll see you next year.
Laura, did you want to say anything, or Ron?
I know that the year I gave it out, that Santana did win. Congratulations.
How to do it there. I just pointed at our West Hills letterman's jacket in the closet there for my daughters.
Yep.
So my girls went to West Hills, but my oldest daughter is a coach at Santana, so either way, I'd be happy with the win. I think my daughters would prefer West Hills, so way to go, Pat.
Great. Well, thank you once again, and congratulations, Casey, to you and West Hills Sports. All right, then.
Thank you very much.
So tonight's different. You may see something different around the dais up here. We no longer have the majority of staff sitting down there with your backs to you. We've completely remodeled in here, and now we have staff that will be out in front and visible, and you'll be able to see their bright and shiny faces... Well, half of their bright and shiny faces. And then, of course, we still will be having some of the folks on camera, some of the people giving presentations will be on camera. And so what's mainly different about what we have here tonight is that each council member now has a monitor in front of them, so they can see the presentations much more clearly. We can see, actually, the people that will be on camera, and so we also have a new voting device up here, so we push buttons on, but we won't do that tonight. Matter of fact, we might not even do that until we go live later on in June. Still working out a few bugs, but you know what? I got to tell you, staff, you've done a great job. Jerry, Matt, great job. Thanks for all your IT work that you're doing. Annette, I know you, and James and Rosie have been working hard, so thank you very much for putting this together. And, you know, staff, it's all new for us, isn't it? A little bit different. And so this will be the first time the council's been together at this di- dais. I know that staff has had an opportunity to come out and do a little work as it, but so we'll just see what happens. If we make a mistake, we'll just fix it. If we find we need to do something different, we'll do something different. That's the one great thing about this country, is we can do pretty much anything we want as long as we get the majority vote, so... All right, then. That's going to take us to our consent calendar. Any items to be added, deleted, or reordered on the agenda? And I'm going to call on Laura first.
No.
Okay. Ron?
No.
And Rob?
Not for me, Mr. Mayor.
And Dustin?
No, sir.
Okay, I don't have anything. Marlene?
No, sir.
And Sean?
No, sir.
And Annette?
No, sir.
And do we have any speaker slips on the consent calendar?
No, we do not.
All right, then. I'll take a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Ron, second by, was that Rob? It's kind of tough, guys, because I can't see the mouths move, so we might have to adjust this a little bit, like say your name or something like that. So Annette, can you please call the roll for the vote?
Yes, sir. Vice Mayor McNellis?
Aye.
Councilmember Trotter?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Koval?
Aye.
Mayor Minto?
Aye.
It passes unanimously.
Thank you. That takes us to our first session of non-agenda public comment. Do we have speaker slips?
Yes, we have two in person and one virtual.
Great, thank you.
First public speaker I have is Jim Woodhead. Reminder, you have three minutes.
Well, I just want to say welcome, everybody. It's good to be here in person to see everybody. Unfortunately, we all have these masks. Hopefully, we'll be getting rid of them sooner than later. I wanted to tell everybody, thank you for putting together a fantastic thing. It's great to have everybody up here in front of us to see everyone, and I just wanted to say welcome. It's great to be here.
Great, thank you. That's why I like 15 seconds.
Next speaker I have is Doug Samuels.
Good evening. This is scary up here. Chance to be up here?
Don't worry, it's not our first time.
I'm a 33-year Santee resident, after serving 13 years in the Navy and 17 years with Homeland Security. I know that we have a recreational vehicle parking issue, and currently with Santee Lake storage full and a waiting list of 270 Santee residents. I understand we're looking at some property to maybe get some more parking for our recreational vehicle. That would still leave 220 RVs that are on the waiting list with nowhere to park. The Santee Municipal Code 1010-245 states first that all vehicles must be moved every 72 hours. The second one, which reads almost the same, is all RVs must be moved 300 feet after 72 consecutive hours. We just saw on the football field, 300 feet is a football field. Apparently, at one point, one of my neighbors, who I don't believe is still with us, must have called in to code enforcement about my recreational vehicle. It was tagged with a courtesy notice, and I followed through with the appropriate follow. I understand that we only have one full-time code enforcement officer and one part-time, and with 56-plus thousand Santee residents, it makes for a big job. And mostly, they patrol, and I've talked with both of them. They're wonderful people. When a call comes in, that's usually where they proceed. For example, the most frequent calls are barking dogs, abandoned property, green swimming pools, and large gatherings of mosquitoes. And I noticed within the last year, Santee Magazine and the Union Trib have done an article about recreational vehicles in Santee, and it is directed mostly towards people living in their RVs.
I'm sorry, sir, the three minutes are up. Mayor Minto? Our timer's not working right now, but the three minutes are up.
Okay. We're going to have to ask you to finish. Thank you.
Would it be all right to ask my final question?
Well, I guess we probably should hear what the question is anyways.
Thank you, sir.
Go ahead, ask us the question. Sorry, I didn't make myself clear.
Basically, I'm asking for equal treatment, my motor home versus all the other motor homes that are in Santee that are parked on the street. I plan on using mine quite a bit and being a disabled veteran. It's much easier for me to go right out of my home, get in my motor home within 72 hours, and go and use it.
Okay, here's what we're going to do, because I can see where you're going with this, and I think you're right. You have the right to be treated just like everybody else. We're going to have you talk with... Who should he talk to about this, Marlene? Because that's the way we're going to... We're going to have you talk directly to the people that are going to handle it.
I've talked with code enforcement on up.
Well, I know, but we need to hear, find out what the actual problem is, why something's being dealt out differently, and I think...
I'd be happy to help clarify. I believe that the notice has already been taken care of as far as equal treatment, but we'd certainly be willing to take a look at that and make sure it is.
Yeah, we're going to have the manager's office help you out with that, okay?
Okay. And if I could finish one sentence, I understand 72 hours. If I take my motor home and go get gas, food, air in the tires, and come back after an hour and a half of being gone, does that constitute a new 72 consecutive hours?
I'll be happy to get back with you on that.
You know what? We're going to have, and make sure that our legal staff make sure of the answers on that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, the next speaker I have is Delina Weinfurtner. You just need to unmute yourself. Okay, Mayor Minto, we'll go ahead and call her at the second non-agenda public comment, so we have no further speakers.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. That takes us to item number four, which is a resolution prohibiting parking of vehicles over eight feet in height between the hours of 12:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m. on Cottonwood Avenue between Mission Gorge Road and Prospect Avenue. Melanie?
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council. This is a city-initiated request that Minji May, our principal traffic engineer, will walk you through.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Minji?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council. The city council directed staff to look into parking prohibition of vehicles over eight feet in height on Cottonwood Avenue in the March 10th meeting, and the staff sent out surveys to all the residents along the street, and we received strong... I say overwhelming and strong support for the parking prohibition, with 75% in favor of the prohibition. So these items request your approval for that prohibition. Once we have your approval, staff will be ready to install signs. On the screen, that's the map that's showing the actual area that the parking prohibition is proposed for.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, I have a motion by Ron. Is there a second, or we want to hear the rest of this?
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a second by Laura. Sorry, I didn't even look that way, Laura. I got to get used to this. Okay, I have a motion by...
See how he is, Laura? See that? See how he is?
And I want to thank...
It's going to be one of those nights, I see. Okay, we're going to go ahead and do a vote on this, Minji, and I somehow think the other ones are going to come out the same way. So we have a motion by Ron, a second by Laura, and Annette, please call the roll for a vote.
Okay, Vice Mayor McNellis?
Aye. Aye.
Councilmember Trotter?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
I want to make a quick comment, but it is an aye vote, but I want to thank staff and everybody for looking into this. It was a request that I had made earlier, and I appreciate you doing this.
Councilmember Koval?
Aye.
Mayor Minto?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great, thank you. That takes us to item... Were there any speaker slips on that? I forgot to ask, I'm sorry.
No speakers.
Okay. That takes us to item number five, which is a resolution prohibiting parking of vehicles over eight feet in height between the hours of 12:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m. on Mission Greens Road between Mission Gorge Road and Buena Vista Avenue. Same scenario, Melanie?
Same scenario, sir.
I may make a motion to approve on this one, too, because we've been hearing this for five years.
I have a motion by Ron. Is there a second?
Thank you.
Laura, did you want to second that one again?
Yes.
Thank you. Do we have any speaker slips?
No speakers, sir.
Thank you very much. Please call the roll for a vote. Good job, Minji.
Vice Mayor McNellis?
Aye.
Councilmember Trotter?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Koval?
Aye.
Mayor Minto?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, and we have a speaker on item six, sir.
Great, thank you. That takes us to item number six, which is a resolution authorizing the city manager execute a professional agreement with HMC Group DBA, that's doing business as, HMC Architects for Architectural Engineering Landscape... Architectural Environmental Design Service for the city's Santee Community Center Phase One project and appropriating funds. Bill?
Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm very excited to bring this item forward. I'm smiling ear from ear, but you're going to have to take my word for it. Some background, the city council established this project as a tier-one priority. It's been included in the CIP budget for several years. A site analysis was performed, and the council gave direction that the preferred location was the Riverview Site due east of the YMCA. The center will have space for seniors, teens, and flexible space for the community to use for parties or celebrations of life or other meetings. Next slide, please. Okay, I'm sorry, next slide. Here we go. So a request for qualifications was published and opened for five weeks. We received 20 responses, which is really unprecedented. A rating panel scored the proposals and narrowed it down to six firms that best suited our needs, and we interviewed them. Next slide. So after two days of interviews, our rating panel came to the strong consensus that the clear choice was HMC Architects. Their approach to the development of the site was particularly well-targeted to Sante's goals, needs, and budget. Let me go to the next slide, please. So HMC Architects is a California-based firm with eight offices, seven in California. Their practice focuses exclusively on civic, healthcare, and education-related projects. They have 240 staff in San Diego, Los Angeles, and Ontario offices, and they're ranked among the top 15 design firms nationally by building and design and construction, and have won more than 300 design awards, including 25 in the last year. So they're really a regional powerhouse. Their portfolio includes multiple community centers. In Southern California, they have designed numerous projects for the county of San Diego. We checked their references and negotiated a fee. Negotiated fee is highly competitive and, in fact, aligns closely with the design costs incurred with the construction of Mass Park. Let me go to the next slide. So these next few slides are just examples of some of HMC's recent designs. Included to give an idea of the quality and variety of HMC's recent portfolio. On the left there is Quail Hill Community Center in Irvine, recently completed, and on the right is a senior center in the Central Valley, I think, Los Banios. Go to the next slide. So these are some examples of interior space with clean, modern aesthetic and lots of natural light. That's Liberty Plaza Community Center in L.A. County on the left, and Golden West Community College in Huntington Beach on the right. Let me go to the next slide. Here we go. This is a HMC-designed community center in L.A. County, and I'm going to talk a little bit about the backside of this one later at the end of the presentation, because it's pretty interesting. Let me go to the next slide. So this image is of the YMCA with rooftop solar is taken from a sustainable Santee Plan. In HMC's response to the city's RFQ, they discuss strategies to deliver a flagship community amenity that also advances the goals established in the Sustainable Santee Plan. It appears at this point that the community center has the potential to achieve net-zero energy operations without increasing project costs. I think that's important. So if we go to the next slide, we have a schedule here. There's a proposed design schedule, which puts contract award in construction about a year from now, you know, depending that there are no sort of environmental lawsuits or anything like that. And then I want, it's very important to note that during the design process, staff and the architects will be coming back regularly to the city council to display the evolving design to receive feedback, so that we insert the building lines with the council's vision for the project. And if we go to the next slide, we have the recommendation, but if we could skip to the last slide before we take the recommendation. So I included this last slide in the slide of the backyard of the HMC-designed community center in L.A., because it highlights the interplay of indoor and outdoor space that are amazing year-round climate accommodates, and which HMC Architects has a flair for tailoring to the client's goals. You can see community rooms there that spill out onto patios, which spill into a small amphitheater. The amount of different kinds of events that we could hold there and the community could hold there would be great. So if we just go back to the next slide, the staff recommendation is to adopt the resolution authorizing the award of the contract for architectural engineering, landscape, and environmental design for the Santee Community Center Phase One project to HMC Group, doing business as HMC Architects, and the amount not to exceed... not to exceed $1,230,000 and then appropriating the funds. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Let's go to the speaker slip.
Michael Ranson?
Oh, Michael, good to see you. Good to be here, and this is beautiful. First, I'll just say, I want to speak actually tonight, I don't know, some of you know that I'm actually an interior designer, and I'm a member of the American Society of Interior Design, which is, means that I've gone to a fighter accredited institution, have a degree in interior design, passed three certified, nationwide certified exams to be in interior design and practice for over 20 years. So, having said that, I'd like to say I've done my research on HMC Architects. This past weekend, I took my wife to Long Beach. On the way back, we stopped at Quail Hill, and it's absolutely beautiful. I spoke to some people in the community there, and they love their community center, so I think I am very happy with the process of selecting HMC, and I think that's great. I do have one question, and I know that Mr. Mertz sort of maybe jokingly mentioned an environmental lawsuit, and so I wanted to just address one question I have. In the environmental review here in the agenda, it says that construction plans for the Santee Community Center, all contemplated phases, will be subject to SEQA review as part of the design review process, and HMC Architects will be responsible for preparing necessary studies and SEQA documents. So I'd like to ask genuine, serious question here that I think we should address as a city, given that our city is home to one of the most active legal SEQA abusers who will no doubt take any opportunity to greenmail our city over this project. I wonder if Mr. Mertz, I was gonna ask HMC if they were here, Mr. Mertz could comment on the public process of SEQA? If there's any comment on HMC's experience with preparing SEQA documents? And does HMC have any experience with SEQA abuse on previous projects? Thank you.
Well, what I would tell you is that Director Kush's sage advice, we included all three stages of SEQA for the project in this first phase, and that's why we've hired a local environmental firm from San Diego County that's probably one of the best at it, and so I'm very confident that we'll produce a good document that will pass muster.
Okay, great. I was gonna say to the architect to please cross every T, dot every I, go further than they need to go, don't do the minimum, because otherwise we won't have our community center in a reasonable timeline. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council comments? Anyone? Laura? Laura?
Yes, so this is really where this project, you know, hits the pavement with the over million-dollar price tag, and I've expressed a few concerns before, but I just want to reiterate, before we make a decision, some things. And actually, I have some new information. So I was reading my Park and Rec Business Magazine, and there was an interesting article, it's actually this week, about Los Altos Community Center that caught my attention. It's been under construction during the pandemic, so which means that it's been in the plans for years in their community, and recently their city council asked for a post-COVID community survey, and what they found is a shift in priorities for community services. So through the extensive surveying, they found that the new number-one priority for the city was to ensure services are provided equitably across the city. And the findings de-prioritized, de-prioritized a central location, so it's not that one still is not desired, but it was not, it was no longer the top priority for their constituents. And then I asked, well, should it be ours? And it led me to this question, which is, in community service, what's more important, the location or the services? And through the pandemic, I think about the roles different community services play, but really outside of the pandemic as well, so libraries, assisted living homes, senior parks, hospitals, schools, food banks, parks, museums, or in our case, the historical society. These are all locations that the city, the city's communities, that can use the city's community support without a separate building. And then next, we need to consider the vacant commercial space and the change in that arena in Santee. And to say that it won't change would be short-sighted for a city, I believe. So I did some more research in the commercial market, market post-COVID, and I want to share this quote with you all. "We expect to see a shift towards diverse location strategies and the emergence of a hybrid model, a combination of home working, local office hubs, and a head office." And I also recall at a prior council meeting, Councilmember McNallys mentioned the expensive cost of new construction. Since his comment, this cost has exploded. So do we have a location or locations that already exist and with seed money for remodeling that might be better suited to offer equitable access and a cost savings to our constituents? I have mentioned before the concerns I have, not just for building this project, but the operating cost. There was a group in the community that was pretty dedicated to raising the sales tax in Santee to pay for things like this. That group's enthusiasm has dissolved, and it's possibly because they saw what happened in Leaven Grove when a similar tax initiative was put, well, a tax measure initiative was put to a vote and it failed. And my understanding is, and I may be wrong, so we can clarify, that we can only afford Phase One, and Phase One is the least expensive, we can only afford Phase One with the CIP budget we have. And Phase One is the least expensive phase with no meaningful offset revenue recovery capabilities in design, so that flexible space that was mentioned is not in the first phase, no flexible rental space. Phase Two and Phase Three require an additional $50 million to build, and obviously it could be more than that, because those are old figures. So my concern, another concern, and it is a big concern, is some other unfunded liabilities the city has related to community services, and these need to be a priority. So I want to know what options have we considered for community services post-pandemic that might make more social and fiscal sense at this point?
Good question.
I can address that to some degree. When we brought forward the site analysis study, City Councilmember Koval addressed those concerns, and since then, time, what we've pushed out is we call the virtual community center. So we're doing programs in different parks throughout the city. We're bringing programs to people out in the various different parks, and, but having a central hub will help us to have, you know, bigger community events there, and also, you know, we're really looking for a place for the seniors to gather. When we had to go through cool zones last year, you know, we're just putting them in a room with linoleum tile and, you know, particle walls or ceilings, so I think, I think the community center is definitely in need for the city. It's been part of our plans for 25 years. The city of Carlsbad had built their community, one of their community centers, over a period of 30 years in phases, and now they have it. So that's, that's my answer to that.
Okay, I guess maybe one of my follow-up questions to that would be, with the economy that we've had, and having businesses leave Santee, like say, for instance, where the Office Depot left, we know that there's discussion of the Barnes &amp; Noble folks leaving, would it be, should we be looking into maybe just doing, getting a lease there and doing tenant improvements? Would that save us money? I mean, they have a significant amount of parking, they're near the Trolley Center, make it easier for some people to get there, although, you know, and when I'm talking about that, I'm talking about people that would be coming to be with their, you know, senior friends or, or family. So I can see where I think Laura's going with this. Is that, does that make kind of sense what I'm saying, Laura, that you're talking about, looking at alternatives?
Yes, that's part of it, definitely. I just want, I, I would hate to build a beautiful community center, and it is beautiful, no doubt about it, but then also have vacant space around the city, you know, it's, things are going to change, and I just want to make sure that we're cognizant of that before we vote on this tonight, and it is a concern for me.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Councilwoman Koval and Councilmembers Marlene Best, for those who can't see me, that's okay. The, the comments that our councilwoman has raised are very valid, and those are things that staff can continue to look forward and look into. At this point in time, as the mayor mentioned, we have some larger footprints in the community that are either vacant or potentially will become vacant, but depending on the economy as it goes forward. However, what I would say to that is that most of those commercial shopping centers currently, amazingly enough, in Santee, while it is prominent in other locations, what we're finding in Santee is that they have lease restrictions that don't allow for certain types of uses within the buildings for us to move into. I think the council's pretty aware of some of the restrictions that we have dealing with the Trolley Square Shopping Center, and there are some other sites. What they would really prefer to do is a long-term lease with a commercial agent who has people that come in for a short period of time, do their shopping, they leave, they have another customer who comes in on a short period of time and leave. We can certainly continue to look into that and see if there are options in some of the other shopping centers. I think those are great ideas. At this point in time, we don't have a site that we've been able to negotiate that way. We did try to get a site for the library. That is another long-term use that the city has been trying to get for some number of years, and unfortunately, county services require, at least they've told us, that they require to have a building that is designed for them, that there is no lease that they own. So to be able to combine with a library and a community center is a comment that's come up previously, and I think that's a great idea as well, and maybe there's something we can do that would bring the library footprint into the community center as we move forward into the other phases, but we're a little short on space. That's part of the problem. So at this point, council has encouraged the community and the city staff through our CIP plan that we would move forward with this. COVID did change the world, there's no doubt about that, but this has been something that's been planned for a number of years, and we've walked through the process. The next steps are up to the city council if you want to move forward or not.
Okay, great. Rob?
Yeah, I thought that's what we were doing here, is discussing this, so that we can decide whether or not we're gonna move forward with this or not. I think Councilmember Koval brings up several excellent points, one of them being the construction costs, and maybe even Councilmember Trotter can, can speak on this a little bit further, but, I mean, just what we're seeing right now in real estate world, I mean, we've seen material costs up 400%. That's 400% if the microphone's not working properly. That's just material costs. So I can imagine that, I mean, building a project like this is going to be significantly more than it was, and this was, I mean, nobody's probably been a bigger advocate of getting the community center going than I have in the past, but the reality is that things have changed, and, you know, our job is not to make a decision and then dig our heels in forever because, you know, we've already made this decision. Our, our job is to make the best decision with the information that's available to us at the time. We have new information now that is available to us. We have a new understanding of, of just the way people are thinking, and to, once again, to Councilmember Koval's point, I know the Office Depot space in particular, they are open to whatever in there, because it is owned by a, by a private person, not a corporation, and he's, he's nervous. It's in the shopping center that I have my office in, and so they're, they're looking for, and there's a lot of, a lot of space opening up in it because of big box stores, you know, they're just, they're not making it. A lot of space, a lot of inventory, when they can, they find that they can do it just as well online and have it delivered and pay less employee costs, just shipping, and it's all good, and that's just the new, the new world we live in, guys. So though, obviously, it would look nothing like this, design-wise, it, it may, it may be able to, and I, and I'm not willing to abandon this altogether by any means, I think, but I, I'm fine with a pause on this right now, until, at least until some material costs come back to some sort of reality, and we have people back on assembly lines that can produce these costs, and yes, I understand there's gonna be a year maybe or so of, of design and all that kind of stuff, and, and getting it through the SEQA process, but, boy, I, I think it's gonna take more than a year before we're gonna have the inventories back up in, in material costs, but like I said, maybe Councilmember Trotter can speak more to that point.
Guess I'm up next. So I, I actually have some of the same concerns Laura had, and so thank you, Laura, for starting that conversation tonight. Bill, can you remind us, if, hopefully you have that information handy, what is the Phase One cost in, in total, and where are these funds coming from to pay for not just the architecture, but the actual construction costs and any related stuff to it?
Sure. The, the total cost of the project, including design, is $12,800,000. And the sources are the public facilities fees, which is a fee designed specifically for building, a building like this, parking lieu fees, and then some general fund, and we have some state grant money, that's, that's a non-competitive grant, which means we just, we just get it based on our per capita population. I can address a little bit the budget and the, and the cost of construction, because as part of our interview process, we asked all six of the firms we interviewed for a frank discussion of our budget and if we would need to increase it, and if they thought that we had enough money to build this building, and the answer was affirmative, that they thought that we had a good budget and could possibly actually add on a little extra space during the process.
So, to the first, the first item you, the facility fees, where's that money come from?
It's a developer impact fee.
Okay, so if we don't have any development coming in, we have no more money going into that fund?
Yes, we, we base the budget on a projection that our finance department does, based on projects that are in the pipeline.
They're currently in the pipeline, not anything that's maybe in the future, but that's currently, correct?
I'll defer to-
Yeah, I, okay, yeah, so is, is example, is Phineet Ranch included in the projection for any fees going towards this?
I do not believe so.
Tim?
Confirmed. Phineet Ranch is not included in our estimates. We have about $9 million of the $12.8 million cash in the bank, so the balance is projected to be collected within the next two fiscal years.
Over either current projects or outside of what we just mentioned?
Correct.
Okay.
Definitely not including Phineet Ranch.
Okay. Obviously, that's a concern. And Councilman Nelson's right, building materials are going through the roof in, in every facet. Everybody hears stories about lumber, but it's not just lumber. Lumber is, you know, some of it's up 150% increases on some items, some are 500% increases. The newest report that just came out from the NHB last week is they expect another 130% increase this summer on lumber, above and beyond where we are right now, which, you know, on a house, I'm just using a house example, the current increase to a house, just the lumber cost is $36,000 to build a house today, an additional, but that's not including wiring and plumbing and, you know, other material costs that, that go into these buildings. A commercial building is different than a house slightly, but, you know, steel is up 300% on steel, so rebar, steel beams, things of those natures. It, it's across, I mean, there's, there's percentages across the board on all materials. It's a big concern, and for us to take on a project like this right at this moment, obviously, we have been saving for this for quite some time. I'm leaning toward what Rob said, is taking a pause on this for, for a minute to make sure that we're doing the most, the best thing for, for our community at the moment, right now. So, Mayor?
Well, I'll remind everybody, the, kind of getting into what Laura is saying also is, six years ago, when I came in, the biggest, one of the biggest problems we had was Walmart Superstore, and they wised up real quick and said, we're not gonna build it. And there is, I'm seeing personally, I just, you know, people don't want to come back to work, they're gonna want to work out of their houses and things like that, so when I hear so many, like the county saying they're gonna build office buildings, I'm real hesitant to understand how they're gonna do that. But, you know, we, we need, we want- But, you know, we, we need, we want this. I, I think it's an outdoor world now. And so, you know, I, I would like to see it a little more outdoor, you know, or availability of outdoor, if we could. And I think they were trying to do that with part of it, with one of it I saw. But it would be good to get the plans. I don't know if we need to sign the full contract. I'm open to maybe having them look into it and have them reassess their values and things like that, just to make sure that they think we can do it. I hate to give up on the project completely, but I'm okay. I think we should look into it, though, so. I don't know where everybody, it sounds like everyone else wants to kind of move on. I'm more than willing to make a motion if, if I can get a second. I don't know if I will or not.
Well, I think what I'm hearing more than anything else is a pause versus even entering into a contract. I actually, you know, this is a tough one for us because, you know, Bill, you, your, your folks have worked very hard on this. And like you said to begin with, I'm really proud of this. And you should be beaming from ear to ear with a smile on this. Unfortunately, we have to make a, a really tough decision. And, you know, it's like at Christmas time, parents can't always give the kids what they want because of finances. And that might be where we're at today. And I, I think that, I think along with whatever we do right now, there's going to be direction that will be given to staff. And I'm going to ask Sean this. Let me ask this question first, if you move. We can table this, right? Or that would be the proper procedure for pausing it, for instance? Or would we have to take a, a vote, say no, and then bring it back some other time? Because I don't think that would be the best way of doing it.
No, you, you have a variety of, you could, you could say yes, you could say no, or you could say, hey, you want to take a pause and get more information? And then you would just give that direction. So you wouldn't have to take any action beyond giving that direction and telling staff what it is you're looking for in addition to what's before you now.
Okay, great. Rob?
Yeah, so we're, we're learning information, like just on the daily. Things are changing all the time. We'll see what happens after June 15. And then maybe a month after that, we'll see how people start to react. I mean, I don't know, but a number of you, of people were at Carlton Oaks on Friday and their first night of having music out in the patio. And there were a lot of people out there because they just were ready to get back to a normal life again. Maybe that's what happens right away. Maybe there's, you know, a resurgence. We don't, we don't really know that. So the only way we're going to find that out is with a little bit of time. So if we have to bring this back at a date certain, I mean, three, maybe four months, like a quarter, three months to, a quarter to trimester of, of the year here, is probably prudent to, we will have more information as things open back up and we see how people react to that. It took some time for people to go completely hermit crab. It's going to take some time for people to break that and come back out into the public in major droves. The majority of the people that I saw out there on Friday were people that were out there from day one anyways, they never went away. So, you know, they were just dying to have other people around them for the most part. But they're still, I mean, I hear it on the radio, like people talking about themselves. They're still very, very afraid of coming out and being in public and being in, especially in confined places or spaces. So another design feature that may have to go into this is what's going, I've seen a lot, we've seen a lot on the coast and stuff like that for a lot of years, is just that, you know, removable wall, basically, an open wall. So the whole front, the whole glass front is a wall that opens up and becomes basically a patio. So it is open. It can be utilized during times, unfortunately, such as a pandemic like this, and we need to have open air and all that kind of stuff in order to be able, allow people in there, but still provide shelter, still provide maybe some heating sources and/or cooling sources. You know, but those are definitely things that I think we all understand need to go into a new design in today's new world. So my suggestion would be, you know, three, maybe four months, we bring this back at a council meeting then and see what the world is doing at that moment.
Can I jump in just one more second?
No, it's good. Go ahead, Ron.
Well, and again, that gives HMC some time to reassess their ideas, too, so they can maybe look at them and say, yeah, we need to work on these and maybe we can cut some money or, or maybe it'll cost more, who knows?
Yeah, but I think we have to have a contract for them to do that.
No. That's, that's actually what I was going to start with. Bill, honestly, I, you worked so hard on this and I, and I've seen, I've, I've been actually at the beginning of this with you, you know, sitting on the park and recreation committee and seeing this come fruition. I want to see this come fruition just, just as much as probably the next person does. But I think the, what Vice Mayor McHale said, now you're bringing it back, but I think with, with kind of a reassessment, and not necessarily your numbers don't change, but relook at the numbers, the, the costs, the, everything that's associated with and, and/or the design, may, may, you know, the different nuances of it, too. I think we just need to make sure that we are, if, if and when we go forward, that we, we have adjusted for the, for the times that we have coming forward right now and make sure that we, we are, have the best information in front of us at that time, still.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a suggestion? HMC Architects, they are, they're listening in to the council meeting. I can go back to them tomorrow and, you know, they've heard your concerns and see if they can address them and alleviate some of the concern. And I'll get back to you as soon as I can.
Okay. So, Ron, I know you're going to throw out a motion there.
Actually, what I said is I'm willing to make a motion. I didn't make a motion.
All right, then. How, how about if we have somebody move on this, that we would pause this for a period of four months? Direction to staff is to have further conversations with maybe HMC or whoever's necessary. Also, we want to take into concern Laura, take into account Laura's concern, look at maybe some of the buildings that we have that are vacant now, that might be able to enter, we get into a lease for, for less. So, I guess, I, I guess that would be a motion, then. So is there a second to the mayor's motion?
You know, Hometown Buffet, I'll, I'll make a second to that. The Hometown Buffet's been sitting there all that time, so we could buy that thing and tear it down and start a, start something there, too.
Is that a proper motion, councillor?
Yes, that's fine. You could, you could do that. Or again, I mean, you have a whole range of options. You could do essentially nothing and just say, listen to us and, but, but your motion is, is appropriate.
Okay, so that'd be a table till, for four months. And you, you have a calendar handy? You can tell us what four months is?
Excuse me, Mayor.
Who's speaking?
Laura.
Laura is.
You know, what makes that funny is I'm looking around for where's that coming from?
And it could be the voice in your head, too, by the way.
It could be.
I forgot what I was going to say. Jeez.
Oh, no.
Well, Mayor Minto, for the September meetings, we have the 8th and the 22nd so far, but the 22nd might be the one that we are possibly canceling for the league.
Mayor, you may just.
So I do remember what I was going to say. One, one of the things that, and with Councilmember Trotter bringing this up, too, I think it's good when we, maybe before we bring this back for a vote in four months, have a workshop with council to discuss the finances and make sure they're updated and accurate and, and have a real understanding of the phases. Because the 12.8, like Tim McDermott mentioned, is, I believe that's for the first phase. So we want to make sure that that's accurate still. But then also phase two and phase three, are there any changes in those costs? And then also understand the operating costs of each of those phases. And, you know, I, I don't know what we are considering as a city. I heard 30 years to build a community center. I'm sure none of us want that. So what are we really talking about and how can we really fund this in a meaningful way?
Okay, great. Okay. Yes, Marlene?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick suggestion. Without any motions on the part of council, we've heard your direction. How about if I work with Bill and we talk to HMC, we look at other available properties in the area, we look at surveying the community based upon their needs, their desires, we work with Tim on the numbers that are available, and we bring back a report to you that fully flushes out some of the concerns that all of you have raised here today. And we look at doing that at an appropriate date, whether that's the last meeting in August or the first meeting in September. But it, give us some time to work on your concerns with the architect that, that we have selected and we'd like to work with. There may be other alternatives that we can bring back to you.
Okay. Well, then, in order to make that.
I withdraw my second.
Okay, I was going to say, we're going to withdraw that motion, give direction to staff to bring this back at a time approximately four months from now. And we'll, we'll look at whether or not we can include in there a workshop on financing with, with the council.
Yes, sir. Part of that will come with our CIP program.
Okay, that sounds good. All right, well, great discussion. Bill, sorry that didn't go off the way you were hoping for tonight, but I think we're still going to have something really great for you to be proud of.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. All right. That will take us to item number seven, which is community choice aggregation, an update. And Kathy will give us that. Before we, you know, before we go on, though, I want to let you know that one reason why Councilmember Koval is not here tonight, she had a surgery a while back, and she's still, you know, gets very tired and it comes on very suddenly for her. So we want her, she may have to leave the meeting at some point. We want to make sure that she's safe and healthy and all that good stuff and, and can get, get the rest that she needs to recover. So I just want to put that out there in case you see her suddenly drop off the conference. All right, then. So go ahead, Kathy.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. It's nice to finally be back with all of you in person. Well, most of you, Councilmember Koval, it feels like you're here with us, so. Tonight, I'll be providing you with a brief update on the status of community choice aggregation, which, if you remember, it's also known as CCA, and we will be seeking direction from you. I also want to let you know that Ryan Barron, one of our BB&amp;K attorneys and an expert on CCA, is also on the phone, in case there's any questions that I can't answer that you might have following my presentation. So the last time CCA was before you was October of 2019, when the city council adopted an ordinance at that time to move forward with pursuing a CCA program. Also, at that time, you directed staff to work with the County of San Diego on a potential joint CCA program through a joint powers authority. So because it's been almost a year and a half since we last talked about this, I'm going to start with just a brief overview of, of what CCA is. Next slide, please. So CCA is a program that was approved by the state that allows local governments to procure power for itself, its residents and its businesses, from alternative energy suppliers. So while the CCA would provide an alternative, an alternative energy source, the existing utility, or in our case, SDGNE, continues to provide the transmission and the delivery of the energy. They also continue to provide the gas service, the billing services, and they maintain the infrastructure for that, for the transmission of that energy. Next slide. So essentially, there's two models that a city could use to form a CCA program. And the first one is an enterprise CCA, which is a standalone program similar to what a lot of cities have in water and wastewater enterprise funds. So it wouldn't be commingled with the general fund, but it would be a part of the city. So the city council would act as the decision-making authority and they would set the rates. And there would be no other partners or, or other jurisdictions who were part of that program with us. The other option is a joint powers authority, or known as a JPA, and it's a partnership with multiple agencies. And it's also a separate legal entity that's governed by a board of directors that acts on behalf of the member agencies. Next slide. So some of the benefits of a potential CCA are more local control over our electricity rates and our energy sources. So really, one of the main goals here is using more renewable energy, and that allows more control over that. It also provides increased customer choice, so it gives our ratepayers another option other than the existing utility. It can also help in achieving state-mandated climate action goals. And in our case, it can help the city meet our goal of providing 100% renewable energy by 2035, as outlined in our sustainable Santee plan. Next slide. Some of the risks of creating a JPA program is a division of customers that would be in the CCA program versus those who stay with SDGNE. So when you create a CCA, customers are automatically put into that program unless they choose to opt out, then they can stick with the existing utility. There can also be unexpected regulatory changes that can impact rates and the operations of the CCA program. There can also be changes in the energy market that can impact rates. And there's also some uncertainty that is created in what's called the PCIA fee. So there's, there's going to be a lot of fluctuations in this. And what that is, is it's a CCA exit fee. So when customers join the CCA, they have to pay a fee to SDGNE for some costs that they have incurred having that person in their, in their utility. Next slide. So back in 2019, we had seven public meetings where we discussed CCA and a lot of different options and pros and cons. And as I mentioned, in October of 2019, the council adopted an ordinance at that time, allowing us to implement a CCA program. And as I mentioned, you directed us to talk with the county to look at a joint program with them. Next slide. So unfortunately, the pandemic hit. And in early 2020, the county called us and we put CCA on hold due to the operational impacts of what was happening with the pandemic. And so just as we started, starting up conversations with the county again, the county board of supervisors in, just last month, in April of '21, modified its guiding principles regarding CCA, and it directed its staff to start discussions with two existing JPA programs here in our local region. And those are the San Diego, San Diego Community Power JPA and the Clean Energy Alliance. Next slide. So in anticipation of the county most likely joining one of these two programs, the city of Santee now has to look at what our current options are in moving forward. So we could join one of the two existing local JPAs. We could begin discussions with some of the other cities in the region. And I happen to mention here, Oceanside Vista, Escondido, and San Marcos, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in, in just a little bit. We could establish an enterprise CCA, which would be our standalone program, or we could stay with SDGNE at this time. Next slide. So just to give you a very brief overview of the two JPAs that are currently in establishment in our region, the Clean Energy Alliance consists of Carlsbad, Solana Beach, and Delmar. And the San Diego Community Power consists of San Diego, Chula Vista, Encinitas, La Mesa, and Imperial Beach. Now, both of them offer pretty much the same power supply goals. Their goals are to always provide more renewable options than SDGNE. They are both currently providing 50% renewable energy options to their customers, or will be. My understanding is they're just about to launch this program for their residents in the next month or two, actually. And they both have goals of being 100% renewable by 2035, which is consistent with our sustainable Santee plan. Next slide. So if you remember, when we talked about these, the biggest difference is the San Diego, San Diego Community Power has a weighted vote option on their board of directors. So what that means is, they call it a voting shares vote, and it's based on each member's annual energy use. So really, based on the size of a city, they'd have more energy use typically. So they, while I have, my, my understanding is they have not used a weighted vote option since they implemented this program back in 2019. That is an option that, that their board does have. They also both admit new members by a two-thirds vote of the board. And they also require payment of a membership fee, although they have not designated what that membership fee is. And it could be different for each city. So larger cities may cost more than smaller cities because it's based on the cost that's required to have that, to have that jurisdiction join their program. And they both also, also have withdrawal options. So if we joined one of them and decided this wasn't for us, Clean Energy Alliance has a one-year notice and it would. has a one-year notice, and it would begin at the beginning of a fiscal year, while San Diego Community Power has 180-date written notice. Next slide, please. So this is where I'm going to talk about some of the other jurisdictions. So we talked about where the county's at, where some of these other cities are with regards to their current membership. So right now, Oceanside is the only other city in our region that has completed a feasibility study. And that's important because that's really a city's first step in looking at a program, and if it's feasible for them and how they want to move forward. But Escondido, San Marcos, and Vista are not far, are not far behind. So they have draft studies, and they will be taking those to their councils in June. And it may take them a month or two to get through that process, and their councils will give them direction on, on what, you know, where to go. The rest of the cities, National City, Coronado, Poway, El Cajon, and Lemon Grove, as, I haven't reached out in the last week or last couple of months, but from what we know, there's no known actions or discussions that they have had with regards to formally moving forward or joining a community choice aggregation program. Next slide. So as I mentioned, one of the other options would be for Santee to form its own enterprise CCA. So based on our feasibility study that we did back in 2019, we could expect to see discounts for our ratepayers of approximately 1% over what SDGNE currently charges. And we would see startup cost of possibly $300,000. If you remember, the City Council did set aside $300,000 about a year and a half ago for this purpose, so those funds are still available. But generally, we would expect to see better rate savings and, you know, better operational efficiencies through a joint program. Next slide. So if we stayed with SDGNE, just as a comparison, SDGNE currently provides 39% to 44% renewable energy option to its customers in its default rate right now. They also have an Echo Choice, which gives their customers an option to upgrade anywhere between 50% and 100% renewable energy. And they also recently announced that they were committed to reaching zero greenhouse gas emissions by 2045, which is about 10 years longer than most cities' local climate action plans. But the biggest question with this option is SDG, you know, is SDGNE getting out of the power procurement business? And that is the biggest risk here and the biggest question. So we've been told that, yes, they are planning to get out of it, we just don't know the timing of that. Next slide. So with that, we're looking for direction from you. With any of these options, we can do more analysis, and we can bring back additional information. And depending on what direction we take, we may also need to do an updated feasibility study, which would require hiring a consultant and moving forward with that, with that process. Sometimes when you join a new JPA or you want to form one, the cities want to see a current feasibility study, although 2019 might not be that far, far back, and they may be okay with that. But that may be something we have to look at. So that concludes my presentation, and Ryan's on the phone, and I'm happy to answer any questions as well.
Great, thank you. We do have one speaker slip.
Yes, sir. The speaker is Dan Bigford. A reminder, you have three minutes.
It's been almost two years now, and here's, here's my words from almost two years ago. I'm positive tonight that we'll hear a short-sighted mantra, cheaper rates and greener energy. Who can be against that? Well, here I am. On January 23rd, my question to the council was, why start a CPA or CCA? To save ratepayers money, to generate money for the city, to save on greenhouse gases? Or is it to stick, or is it to stick it to the big corporate SDGNE devil? CCA's miss the marks on all counts. SDGNE wants out of the generation business. And they're not doing it because it's a big moneymaker. One, one council meeting, the, an SDGNE rep flat said it was passed through. They're not making any money off this. How are we going to? Only about a third of our bill is generation. SDG is shaking off the money-losing portion of their business to suckers. I won't go through everything I said here a couple of years ago, but I will go to the And I talked about exit fees. And it's been almost two years, and we still don't know what exit fees are. How do, how do we, how do we know that we're making the best financial decision if we don't know that? Why are they still hiding it after two years? I only see the, the benefit of CCA's as benefiting SDGNE. I see CCA's that have formed that are struggling right now. Solana Beach didn't bring on other, take, other people because they were doing so well. They did it because they were floundering. And so they, they brought on other people. I still don't see that they're doing great. And they're raising rates. And they have to. So let's go down, five years down the road, and CCA's fail. Then what? State takes over. Which might be the plan altogether, is that the state takes over generation of electrical. One more thing for the state to efficiently manage for us. So I'm against CCA's, if you didn't know. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Council comments? Ron?
Laura's there, too. Go ahead, Laura. Why don't you go first?
Thank you. So I did read, I forget who published it, but it was the Point Llama Nazarene University did a, the Furmanian Business and Economic Institute did an assessment of San Diego's CCA and what they're doing. And their conclusion was, it will not make power bills lower for San Diego residents or small businesses. It will not make our power any greener or produce substantial, environmental benefits. But the reality is, once the City of San Diego voted to start purchasing power on behalf of the citizens, it no longer makes economic sense for SDGNE to be part of that part of the energy business, because it is the riskiest part of their business. And they've been, you know, they haven't been hiding the fact that they're going to get out of it, which means we're going to have to purchase power from somewhere. The City of San Diego was able to set up their JPA with the same structure as Sandeg, and essentially giving themselves ultimate authority over the energy funds regardless of what the other member cities want or may want in the future. And that's why we decided to decline joining their JPA. You know, I think something was mentioned about there hasn't been a weighted vote yet, but that's because there hasn't been money to take yet. There will be. So I wanted to see what the state of California is doing in this arena. I agree with the speaker that I think ultimately the goal is for the state to take this over because I see a lot of failure happening. Finding someone who is actually skilled at purchasing power is not an easy find, and those contracts are long. So that's going to be a very important, critical part of a CCA. But the, the CCA climate goals are typically more aggressive than the state mandate, which is 100% clean energy by 2045. And it's interesting that recently, eight CCA, so already-formed CCA's in Northern and Central Coast California are joining forces to form a new joint powers authority called California Community Power. So there, there we go. The conglomerate CCA is already happening, and what is forming today is not what we're going to see in 10 years. So, and my feedback on this, I do think, I think it was option three, I don't know what it was about, but I think we need to discuss some options with some other cities that are looking at CCA's, you know, just to see what, what's out there for a partnership for us, for a partnership that we want. But I also think that, you know, energy purchases don't have to be geographically restrictive like, like water purchases are. Everyone in the state has the same goal of clean energy, but our best option would be to get the best price with the structure offering the best ROI for our city ratepayers, regardless of the provider's geographic location. So I don't want to rush into a bad deal, I've said that before, and there's no.
Muted.
Hey, do we turn her off?
Yep.
Three minutes are up.
We're working on it.
Please.
She's just having her own conversation.
Hold, hold on, hold on a minute there. We're having some technical difficulties, Laura. Your three minutes were up, so we turned you off.
He's back on.
Are you back on? Try again, Laura.
Yeah, I hear you.
She's self-muted. She needs to unmute.
Was I muted the whole time?
No, not the whole time. Just right after, well, let me tell you about this.
I can't tell.
No, go ahead. You're only muted for a few sentences. See, I told you this should be fun tonight.
Hello, Laura. Can you hear us now?
So you mute, you mute this one.
Let's ask her if she can raise your voice.
Hey, can you hear us, Laura? Can you hear us at all?
No, not yet.
So if she can't, nobody can.
Make sure you unmute yourself, though.
I, I can hear you now. Sorry. Was I muted the whole time I was talking?
No, not the whole time, just maybe the last two minutes, max. Not even two minutes, minute.
I don't know what, what you missed, so.
Well, you might want to start after the, the weighted vote, similar to the Sandeg from San Diego's JPA.
My, my only point after that is, you know, what's happening in the state and in North and Central Coast California. There are eight already-formed CCA's that have, they're joining together for another new joint powers authority, calling themselves the California Community Power. And I, I just think that what's, what, what people are negotiating today is going to change dramatically in 10 years. I wouldn't rush to join a JPA without the right format. Sounds like the county is looking to join something else now, and so they, they probably aren't going to be the partner we want any longer. And we want to find the right partner.
Without doubt. Well, thank you. Ron, you were going to also make comments?
Well, SDGNE was about 43%, if I was correct, in renewable energy, and they had the option you can go 100%. So, I mean, they're basically where these other guys are. I, you know, we, we all know about the weighted vote. The mayor knows, and I know real well, between MTS and Sandeg. Last thing I want to do is jump in with this group. Nothing personal, but I see, this is a problem we had a year and a half ago. Bottom line is, we said, we got to go find somebody we can get along with. A year and a half ago was a different Board of Supervisors. And a year and a half ago, it was a whole new world. I am in no rush to go get ourselves in a position where all of a sudden we're, we're paying 3% more rather than saving the 1% at a cost of $300,000 on top of that. So at this point, I think we ought to just sit tight and wait till this whole thing shakes out, and then we can probably see what's going on. Because I, I just see bad things here for the next two or three years. I don't know where we are, city manager, or Kathy, are we required to do something? At one point, we had to do something by 2021, 2022. Are we still in that rule where we have to do something, or what?
We, my, sorry, my understanding is we don't have to do something, but we do have a settlement agreement that says we will be attempting our best, given, given the situation.
Well, let's attempt our best for the next two or three years.
Now that I'm meeting a gummy bear, thanks. I'll put my mask up, you can't tell.
Let me see you, too.
So generation is obviously not something that we're looking to, to do. We're looking to buy into other contracts that, you know, that are established out there, much, much like the rest of the other communities are doing. I said several years ago, there's, you know, with the weighted vote, there's no way I could see us getting involved in that, so I chime in as well. And being opposed to getting into that, that JPA. The other concern that I have is, with the Carlsbad one, is just looking at who's in it. The priorities may be a little bit different, because what we're, what we were looking at previously was, there, there is revenue from this. There's, without doubt, there's revenue from it. It maybe, it's not, you know, going to save the world revenue, but there's revenue from it. And the JPA will be responsible for dolving out that money, those monies, in a voted situ, voting situation. If we've got, if we're in with a, a JPA that's for city, not just coastal, but actual beach communities, and we're out here in, in Santee where they think you fall off the face of the earth once you get past the 15 freeway, I don't know how much of those funds we will be able to bring back home in a vote. So it may not be a weighted vote, but it's still going to be a weighted vote.
Yeah.
I think dealing with communities that are similar to the City of Santee, like El Cajon, Poway, and as Laura, I actually looked to my right for Laura. As Councilmember Koval stated, you know, this is, this isn't a geographic thing necessarily. However, where you live geographically does, you know, tend to dictate a lot of how you're, how you're going to lean when it comes to what you're going to do with those funds. So having more inland that do also generate more sun in, in, in a group makes more sense to me just philosophically. I mean, maybe it doesn't really matter, but philosophically, it just seems to make some common sense. I thought we did have, at the last meeting, though, I thought we did have some sort of clarification of exit fees, of the maximum. It wasn't what they were going to be, but it was not to exceed something with SDGNE. Because I had brought that up multiple times, and I swear that there was something brought up that, by SDGNE, that there was, either was a state mandate, or it was their own.
Councilmember, I think the last time we spoke about this, the state, pardon me, Vice Mayor McNallys. The last time we brought this forward, the state CPUC was looking at what those pick fees should be. There has been some determinations on those, but perhaps Ryan on the line could answer that question more fully?
Ryan, are you there?
Now, I'm here. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable council members. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Yeah, when we met last time, the commission was in the process of establishing the methodology for how you calculate the exit fee. I think it was around two and a half cents per kilowatt hour last time we met, I'm just going off my memory. Now, they're a bit higher, I think, in the high twos, almost threes. And it's, it's going to depend on what year you launch. So they change every year. They're proposed by SDGNE, and then the CPUC adopts them year by year. And so that applies to you in the year you launch. And they refer to them as vintages, like bottles of wine. And it looks at what, what assets the IOU has at that time that are likely to be stranded. And so that's why they change from year to year, and the IOUs have been trying to put more assets in the exit fees. There was a big fight at the commission this year where they did dip down a bit. um, this year where they did uh, dip down a bit. Um, and I believe they're set to sort of flatten out by 2030 or so. But they're a, they're an issue for all the CCAs around the state, and, and they are between two and a half to three cents.
Another, another concern I have is, you know, we, we do, I, I think we need to, to the much, to the extent that we possibly can, be in control of our own destiny. And by that, you know, waiting for the state to take over is, is, to me, that's, you know, that's hope. And hope is not a strategy, uh, especially when you look at how well the state handles, well, damn near anything. Uh, Biden's just came out today or yesterday talking about he wants a 50% reduction in greenhouse gases by 2030. And that's gonna be, that's gonna be a new mandate. So there's gonna be a lot of push towards that. We do have a settlement, uh, that we need to continue to go forward this. And we know it's a group that can be litigious. So if we aren't doing everything we possibly can, they're, they're gonna take us back to court. I mean, it's, and they're gonna get paid. So we do need to, we do need to put our best foot forward and not just, um, not just bury our head in the sand and pretend like this isn't gonna happen and just drag it out for two or three years. We, we need to look at who's, who's best uh, to work with. And I mean, state-run power procurement, what are the rates gonna be for that? I mean, do you remember when Brown was in charge and what happened to electricity and-
That was Gray Davis.
Davis, sorry, the, the deregulation and all that. That, that worked real well. So we had more blackouts at that time than we'd ever had in our state history. Um, and the last part is there's still, there's still costs of grid, the transmission. I mean, that's, so we could do all this great stuff for procurement, but we're still gonna pay SDGNE for the transmission. It's gotta get from point A to someone's house. And what are those fees going to be? And how do we, how are we gonna address that? I mean, much like we're talking about everything tonight, being, you know, feeling like it's our first time back here, even though we've still had meetings, it's, yeah, lots changed, guys. And uh, maybe, gotta shake some cobwebs off some of this stuff and maybe have another darn workshop on this. Like what, what's the latest, latest on these numbers? I, I, and Kathy, you've done an amazing job as always with, you know, just kind of, all right, here's, here's what happened with these groups. But the reality is what's, okay, what's, what's the hard numbers now? Who's, who's uh, still standing uh, in the stuff? Because, you know, guys, we started this really, what, five years ago, six years ago, these discussions? And, you know, we were gonna be way behind the times, and everybody was gonna have it done before we even got, well, obviously that didn't necessarily happen. And at the time, I think there was only one CCA actually operating up in, up towards-
Long Beach, I believe.
No, no, no.
Oh, Marin County?
Yes, yeah, somewhere like San Jose-ish area that was actually operating. And then another one, maybe it was Lancaster, that was just about to go onboard. And, well, okay, that's been several years now. What's going on with them? What, what have we learned? What can we learn from that to do and not do? And then, and at the same, while at the same time, let's keep talking, if it's possible, with communities, not just in San Diego, but maybe outside of San Diego, of, you know, uh, cities in Riverside and San Bernardino and things like Inland Empire, that may be in a similar spot and, and wanna, and, and wanna talk somehow. Cause there's, uh, there's power in numbers, and that's obvious. That's hence the reason, city of San Diego, county is, wants to go in with the city now. That's gonna be a pretty, that's gonna be another gorilla here in San Diego County that we would have no, we'd have no say so in anything there. Um, but by the same token, they're going to, you know, that they're going to be able to procure better rates than we would on our own. So we should be linking up with other entities that feel somewhat similar to what we, uh, to what we feel. And absolutely no weighted votes.
Again, my, my concern, let me get back on real quick. Sorry, Dustin. My concern is the same thing, is we're not gonna have a weighted vote. And all of a sudden, you get two thirds going, oh, well, you know, we're gonna start having a weighted vote. I mean, this is Sandag all over. And it's, uh, or we'll go get legislation and say we're gonna have weighted votes now. So that's why we have to get like-minded communities to, to go with this, or at least smaller cities than us.
So I, I did have the, the exit fee question, which kind of been answered, and then 100% renewable injur- energy. So Kathy, if I'm not missing, SDGNE does offer 100% renewable if you choose as a consumer to purchase that from them, correct?
They do.
Eco-choice thing, it's the-
Yes, and my understanding it is limited. So um, they can't offer it to, if everybody signed up tomorrow, they can't offer it to any, everybody, because there's just not enough renewable energy.
Right, which is part of the problem, is that they don't have the, enough renewable energy to offer us to get to a 100% renewable.
Right.
Right?
But it is still available for residential um, ratepayers right now.
Okay. And then something that um, we just recently saw again, uh, remember, is that Santee, that we saw that report recently, Laura, remember, Santee's number two solar city in the nation? Do you guys know that? We're almost number one in, in the entire nation. It's pretty much California and Arizona are pretty much out of the top 100 uh, cities in the entire nation. And we almost hit number one. I forget the numbers. We're only like, a small, a small uh, figure behind. So we're already hitting an amazing amount of um, solar energy in this, in the city, in the, with the renewable. And if I don't, if I remember correctly, Kathy, wasn't it like two years setup or startup time for these JPAs or um, um, you know, I know, but whatever, the, when you start, start up, the startup time is like a couple of years, right?
So take, for example, the la- the other two JPAs. They both formed at the end of 2019. And then there's an implementation plan you have to submit to the state, and then you get the operations going. And they are, I think one of them is currently providing the rates to their municipality um, accounts, but, and they're just about to launch their residential, and then they'll do their commercial. And so what, that'll be almost two years before they really get-
Right. And then I, I think I remember too, was um, it was gonna be upwards to five years before some money would be dispersed out of those funds. If I'm, again, I, like you, like you said, this is, this has been going on for five or six years. We've been hearing this stuff in the meetings. And if, am I correct? It's like five years where we actually saw money, you know, come, come out of this or something. It, so I, I was actually gonna finish on the same note is, you know, obviously there's other count, cities in the county that haven't uh, made choices or done anything yet. But have we looked outside of the city, or the county of San Diego, excuse me? Um, I was thinking more of Imperial than the Riverside County. Obviously, geographically, Imperial's is to our east. And to me, Imperial has a whole bunch of windmills and solar farms out there. Do, do they have joint power stuff out?
Ryan can speak to some of that.
Okay.
He, he is very familiar with some of the Riverside and the, you know, the LA-area um, organizations. So he could speak to some of that. And we did look at that. Um, Ryan, I think you might have some opinions on that or some more information.
Yeah, there's a lot of renewable energy being built in Imperial County, but the county is served by the Imperial Irrigation District. So legally, they can't form a CCA out there because they're their own public utility. And they serve the entire county, um, both transmission and generation, and, and have pretty low rates. And then they serve Eastern Coachella Valley. And then there's, I think, three CCAs in Western Riverside County.
Okay. That's kind of, I was thinking, I was like, they're already making a whole bunch of stuff out there. You know, why are we trying to talk? But I think we just need to look outside of San Diego, if that's even an option at this point. You know, see what the best options are for us.
Sounds good. And to let you know that um, I think it was uh, June 12th, 2012, when we first started talking about this, when Jack Dale and I uh, brought it forward. And one of the reasons why we did that is because it was Marin County, Marin City, the city of Marin, was the only one that had entered into a JPA, and there wasn't enough information yet. We did a research at Sandag on that. And um, matter of fact, they almost went bankrupt a coup- within a couple of years. So that's one reason why we put it on hold here. So just to let you know the timeline on that. So it was exactly nine years. So um, I think where we're going here with this is since this is an update, we're just gonna continue to give staff direction to look into this and find the best possible avenue for us to go, uh, so that we can comply with the settlement agreement. And uh, you never know what's gonna pop up. Might be some, you know, great uh, miracle that comes along. Yeah, I know, that sounds hopeful, but uh, we'll see what happens. Okay? Well, we're gonna go ahead and uh, move on then in the agenda. That takes us to item number eight, which is the cannabis workshop. And you know what? Before we get on with this, I think we're gonna take a quick break. So we get up and move around for a little bit, so that uh, maybe five minutes or so, and come back. That way staff can also get their stuff prepared. So, pardon me? Yeah, let's not move around too much.
Mayor Minto, also, we have 20 speakers on this item, so I don't know if you're gonna-
Okay. All right, then. All right, then. Okay, let's start coming back to order, please. All right, we're gonna be coming back to order.
Here we go.
Everybody enjoy that stretch. It's almost like baseball. Should have somebody sing, "Take Me Out To The Ballgame."
This is the third inning stretch, though.
Padres lost the second game.
They lost the second game?
That was great to see a slam Diego today, though.
Yes, it was.
For those of you who don't know, Padres, they had the doubleheader today, won the first game. Grand Slam in the, I think it was the sixth inning.
Sixth inning.
By Jake Cronenworth? No, it was by...
Carantini.
Carantini, that's right. So, they lost the second game, though. Sorry for that bad report. So anyways, we're gonna bring this back to order. Based on the number of speakers tonight, I want to let you know that we're going to allow two minutes for each speaker. That way, we still get out of here, hopefully before midnight, because we do have other items on the agenda to take care of. And apparently, our timer is not working. So Annette is going to be using her phone for a timer, and she'll just notify each one of the speakers, your time has expired. And if you can, you know, like, if you're coming up on forty, you know, fifteen seconds left, let everybody kind of know, please wrap it up.
I will do that.
And that way, they go into the last fifteen seconds, knowing that their time will be up. So we'll just manage the best we can, so. All right, so that takes us to item number eight, cannabis workshop. City manager, morning.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is going to be a big item tonight, so we're gonna go ahead and get right to it. If we can get the slides up, there we go. Tonight is a workshop. There is no action that is required by the city council this evening, but direction on forward actions for staff for the future is something that council can do. Next slide. So in March of this year, the city council met to determine their priorities for the next two fiscal years. There were eleven priorities that were determined, and those priorities were approved in final form at your March 24 city council meeting. One of those priorities was to consider the economic development and regulatory options for cannabis businesses in the city with a funding ordinance for the November 2022 election. Next slide. Tonight, I'm gonna focus primarily on the status of legalization of cannabis, industry options and categories of businesses, the process outlines, depending upon where the council chooses to go or not go this evening, and some revenue potentials of legal product sales in the city based on rough estimates. Next slide. Cannabis still remains illegal on a federal level. With mixed messages coming from the Department of Justice and changes in federal administration, it is currently unclear whether the United States government will put more resources towards prosecution of cannabis or towards legalization. In either case, cannabis is currently legal in over thirty states in the United States, including the state of California. Next slide. In the state of California, medical use, medicinal use was legalized by voters in 1996. Twenty years later, in 2016, Proposition 64 was approved by the voters, which legalized adult recreational use of cannabis. Prop 64 was approved in the city of Santee by our voters at a 52.27% rate. Medicinal and recreational use is now governed under the same rules, so the state of California has combined that rule and safety and government management process. Next slide. In the city of Santee, currently cannabis businesses of any and all types are prohibited. Retail, cultivation, manufacturers, testing labs, et cetera, there are no cannabis businesses that are currently allowed in our city. Next slide. Local control for most jurisdictions can be threatened, and what I mean by local control is control that is approved through the elected officials of that particular governing body, rather than by other outside sources. So currently, this year, there was a proposal in the state legislature, AB 1356, which, if passed, would have required that every jurisdiction that did not have cannabis allowed would have been required to approve one retail dispensary for every 10,000 in population. That did not pass, so we're not bound to that regulation, but we don't know what else will come out of Sacramento. The citizen initiative process is currently, obviously, a benefit to our voters, but it removes best management practices in favor of regulations that are inserted into ballot language that are then voted on by the public and become a mandate for the city to implement, rather than standard processes that have worked in other communities throughout the state. Next slide. On a local cannabis approval level, there are nine cities in, of the eighteen, in the county of San Diego that currently either have or are near having cannabis approved on various levels. National City just approved theirs in the last few days, and they included in that approval cannabis lounges, which is a brand-new form of cannabis business within the state of California. San Diego County has announced that they are looking at allowing cannabis uses in businesses in the unincorporated region of San Diego County, and they're moving through the process to come to that determination. Next slide. Changing trends are going through the state of California right now. The number of retail licenses in the state are not as high as the state anticipated when Prop 64 was approved. Therefore, there's a lot of pressure to approve more outlets, which generates revenue to both the state and local jurisdictions. Consumer perceptions have been changing over time, not in completely, but there are a lot of changes that have happened as medicinal and recreational uses have been expanding throughout the state. Regulations have been clarified. I mentioned earlier that the state has combined their management and government processes for both medicinal and recreational use of cannabis. Financial support from investors and banking institutions has become, moving into the industry. Previously, there were not as many investors, it was a brand-new form of industry. Now it's become more established, and banking institutions have begun to provide services for cannabis businesses, whereas prior to this date, most of them, in fact, all of them, for the most part, were on a cash-only basis. So now they actually can have banking services. Next slide. As this council considers the values that you want to look forward to in your community and how cannabis affects those, there are certainly elements of public health and safety to be considered, environmental protection, land use policy impacts, and protection against youth access. Next slide. Cannabis businesses throughout the state of California come in a variety of forms. Cultivation, both indoor or outdoor, manufacture of edibles, baked goods, medicinal products, pills, creams, all kinds of different products for medicinal use, vapes and other types of products that you would normally associate with cannabis industry. Distribution and testing labs, two different types of businesses, but both working through the wholesale process. Distribution is not to be confused with delivery. Distribution goes business-to-business, and testing labs are also from a business perspective. They take a product from perhaps a cultivator and test that product. They may take a product from a manufacturer, test the product itself, but they don't deliver to consumers. Then there's retail dispensaries, which is the more prominent item many people think about when they think of cannabis. It is either medical and/or recreational. Some cities have medical only, some cities have both, and that includes deliveries to consumers for many businesses. So they would go from the retailer to deliver directly to the consumer's home or place of business. Then there's microbusiness, which it has at least three of the four listed above it under one roof. It's called microbusiness because they have at least three, maybe four, of those types of businesses all in one footprint, therefore each one of them is very small, serves in many ways kind of like an incubator for those businesses to get up and running, but they're all under one ownership and one roof. There is a, one more type that is not on the list here for you, and that is the cannabis lounge that has just recently come forward, and that National City did just approve. Next slide, please. When it comes to dispensaries, again, what most people often think of are the illegal dispensaries, which are scattered throughout not only the East County, but the entire state of California. For the purposes of clarification, we wanted to make sure that our residents and the city council have a chance to see what some of the licensed retailers look like. So we pulled pictures off of city websites, pardon me, company websites, to be able to show you what some of these retail establishments look like that are approved and licensed through the state and through their local jurisdiction. Next slide. Here's a couple more. They look, you know, much like you would see in any other retail establishment. Next slide. This one is interesting, only in that it does have, as we mentioned earlier in the evening's presentation, the Imperial Valley. This one happens to be located in the Imperial Valley, a very highly agriculture-oriented area, so I found it interesting that they have a tractor and a green wall listed in, located within the dispensary itself. I happen to know that city utilizes a crown as its logo, so they've got something similar to that, and they have the floor stripes that look like row crops in a field. So that just shows that should the council determine they do want to go down this road at some point, then there is an opportunity to encourage businesses to have more of a sense of place for the city of Santee, rather than just any old store, if you will. Next slide. State regulations do apply to the city of Santee. The state has a list of sensitive uses. It's a map that you can see located on the screen before you. Those sensitive uses include private and public K-12 schools, daycare centers, and facilities where youth congregate, which could be a community center, could be a park, could be any other location that is deemed to be primarily for youth or serves youth on a majority of its basis. What happens with this is you take seven, pardon me, 600 feet from the property boundaries of each one of those uses, and that gives you these yellow outlines where cannabis businesses, according to state regulations, are not allowed. So that would limit some of the areas within the community, should the city council desire to want to make a change in your current policy. Next slide. Some of the things that the city can do to control businesses of this type, similar to any other business, that you might go through a CUP process on. You can look at the time, the hours, the days of operation, no matter if that's a cultivator, whether that's a manufacturer or retailer of any type. You can look at the place, using our zoning code and our building requirements and establishing those that make sense for this type of industry. You can control the manner in which that business operates, the number of licenses that are issued, the security and safety measures that would be specific to a cannabis business, accountability reporting and other items that the city would like to have control of. Next slide. One thing that has changed is the SEQUEL process is now required if we don't have the business in place as of July 1, 2021. So no matter what council action, if you choose to move forward with anything different than a ban, at this point, we would not have anything in place that would avoid the SEQUEL process, so SEQUEL would be a part of moving forward, should you choose to, with any new cannabis opportunities. And any changes in status quo would require drafting of a new city ordinance, and we just would put that forward in the standard process that we do for our ordinances. Next slide. One of the reasons that a number of communities have looked at the cannabis industry in the past is because there is a lot of money on the table. There are a number of expenses for local jurisdictions to get into this business and work with businesses to allow them to come into our community. The standard cost recovery fee that we would charge to any other business walking in, let's say, for instance, to our development services counter, their permit fee is, in many ways, based upon the cost that the city has to perform for our services. The same could be true for a cannabis industry business, where a standard cost recovery fee would be charged to cover the costs that the city has in setting up our rules, regulations, and governance process. There's also community benefit fees that can be formulated, that provides a base rate of a fee for communities, and then, as we've discussed briefly in the priority that was requested to be reviewed, there's normally also, not normally, but many times, a tax that's submitted to voters, which has to go on a ballot, so that the next one would be November of 2022, and that would be a sales and use tax, excise tax, that would be charged on top of the sales tax that already is charged in the city of Santee, and on top of the tax on cannabis that's already charged by the state of California, which is 15%. So you take those two taxes, and there's an opportunity to put an additional tax, should the city council want to go down that road, and should it be approved by voters. Next slide. Given those numbers, we put together with our sales tax consultant some rough estimates. I want to emphasize these are rough. There's stories of millions of dollars to be made by local jurisdictions in a single year, and that may be true, but we're looking at some basic numbers based upon our geographic location and our population. The city of Santee is bounded by Mission Trails Park and Miramar Marine Air Corps Station, so that makes it more difficult for us to contract, or rather, to bring in customers from the West. However, there's an awful lot of people from San Diego that come out the 52, so, you know, you have to judge those geographic locations by our opportunities. Based upon the potential of three licensed storefront retailers in the city of Santee, we looked at three because in many cases what we're learning is, it takes about a population of about 20,000 people to really support and help a business to be a successful business. Having a business coming to Santee that is not able to make it and goes out of business is not a benefit for the business or for the city. So based on three possible licensed storefront retailers, on a conservative amount of revenue, we're looking at an estimate, again, of about 420,000, slightly better, about 525 for a moderate level of income, and then, on aggressive level, a really strong business, about $630,000. That's on an annual basis. In addition to that, as I mentioned before, standard sales tax still applies to the products that are sold within that particular storefront, which we're estimating would be about an additional $1,000, $100,000. Next slide. So there's three possible directions that city council can look at tonight. Again, you don't have to take any action this evening at all. Possible direction, option one, is to keep your status quo, keep the ban. We are vulnerable to impacts from state legal challenges and changes that we've referenced earlier here tonight, and we would be vulnerable to citizen initiatives and how those could be pressed forward. For the most part, the cities in the San Diego County that move forward based upon citizen initiatives, putting cannabis industry in place in those communities, have had the most difficult time getting them up and running. And so we wanted to highlight for you that if we stay where we are, that would be fine, but we do have some impacts that could make a difference in the city going forward. Option number two. Next slide. Option number two is, consider what changes you might want to make if you do. You could request that staff come back with additional information. You could ask for community meetings, stakeholder surveys, various land use impacts of different business types in various locations. You could ask for staff to come back with further information. At that point, nothing would be changed yet, and we'd still be vulnerable to outside impacts on our city regulations and where the city wished to go. Next slide, please. Option number three would be to determine that you do want to make a change. Then you could direct staff to come forward with whatever process information and ordinance updates would be required. You could give us a direction on what type of industry categories you want us to consider as we formulate some new processes for you to review. You could give us direction on how many licenses you think you would like to have. That may be changed as we bring those information pieces forward for your consideration. We'd want to recognize that as we do move those processes forward, they may change and evolve. We may go one direction, and you may say, "I really don't like that, let's go a different one." We've already, you know, heard a little bit of that tonight. We want to make sure that we're going in the direction council really wants. And then, once regulations are finalized, you could be less vulnerable to citizen initiatives. For the most part, in San Diego County, those were brought forward with cities who did not have cannabis allowed within their communities. That doesn't mean that it won't happen. State legislation can also impact any city, whether or not cannabis is allowed or not. Many times, it's different, depending upon what you currently have allowed, but it doesn't mean that we would be safe from the state of California. Next slide. That's the presentation that we've got put for you this evening. We wanted to make sure that we've given you information. We're available for questions. Again, with 20 speakers, I'm sure there will be many questions that we can mull over as you consider this topic for this evening.
Thank you, and we're gonna go to public speakers now, and let's go ahead and start with the people on the phone right now, or virtually, and then we'll take the people that are here. And as a reminder, there will be two minutes for each speaker. And as a reminder, there will be two minutes for each speaker.
Okay. The first speaker I have is Jean Duffy.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Hello, Mayor, City Council members and staff. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Jean Duffy. I've worked in Santee for many years. I'm the mother of three young adults, and my husband is a school district superintendent. I've seen the devastation to our young people caused by marijuana use, to their motivation, to their mental health and physical health, and to their futures. Mayor Minto and Councilmember McNellis, I've watched the city council meetings, and this issue has not been broached by the public. The community is not pushing for marijuana sales in Santee. Council sees this as a potential moneymaker, and so sadly, it seems you could be willing to put overestimated profits above public health and the good of the city. We learned at the March 24th city council meeting that Santee was designated the 34th safest city in California. And do you know what those 34 cities have in common? All but two prohibit all commercial marijuana sales. So don't desecrate our beautiful city. Don't increase crime and make Santee a destination for drug sales, getting high, and then put stone drivers on our roads, putting all who visit and live here at risk. Along with retail marijuana comes crime and violence, and drugs become even more accessible to our young people. If you allow licensed marijuana businesses, we will also get flooded with illegal pot shops, as we've seen happen in so many other cities. Please don't let Santee become a destination for high-grade, high THC, highly destructive pot, and don't let big business become more important than the safety of this community. Now, I'm going to read some headlines that demonstrate the violence commercial marijuana brings with it, so stop me when my...
You have like 20 seconds left.
February 5th, 2021, man fatally shot at Spring Valley Marijuana Dispensary. December 4th, 2020, 16-year-old hurt in shooting at East County Marijuana Dispensary. December 24th, 2019, shots fired in attempted robbery at Chula Vista Marijuana Dispensary. October 25th, 2020, marijuana dispensary delivery driver robbed at gunpoint in...
Thank you, Jean.
Next speaker I have is Dana Stevens. Dana, you just need to unmute yourself.
Good evening, Mayor Minto and Council. Thank you for hearing our concerns this evening. I want to address a couple of the comments that were made in the staff presentation and reiterate the same concerns that Jean mentioned this evening. First of all, the major investors that were mentioned in the staff report were not disclosed who they are, but it is well-known, and if you look at the marijuana, the websites and their own business journals, which I do follow, the major investors are tobacco and alcohol industries. They aren't your mainstream investors. In terms of the ballot measure for the tax, Chula Vista was wise enough to put that tax on the ballot prior to voting to allow, just in case their voters didn't want to tax themselves on the marijuana they were going to buy. So I hope you would consider that prior to making a decision. I also wanted to address the comment in the staff report regarding the combined regulations for both medical and adult-use marijuana. What has not changed in that, and has not been combined, is the age 18 for medical and age 21 for adult use, which, you know, when they're both being sold in the same store, and who knows how that goes? In fact, we don't know a lot, except the little marijuana containers that show up on school campuses, because there is no ongoing rigorous and continuous compliance monitoring that goes on with any of the marijuana... Thank you.
Thank you, Dana.
Next speaker is Barbara Gordon.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. My name is Barbara Gordon. I'm here tonight to share my concerns regarding allowing marijuana businesses in Santee. Studies have shown when a city commercialized marijuana, the use of marijuana increases. There is so much scientific research on the negative effects of marijuana, both in adults and adolescents. Why would the city council not be on the right side of science when making decisions that will affect the health of its citizens? All major scientific and medical organizations agree that marijuana is both addictive and harmful to the human brain, especially when used as an adolescent. The American Medical Association position believes marijuana is a dangerous drug and as such is a public health concern. The city council must also consider marijuana-related issues like drug-driving deaths and car crashes, mental and other health issues due to increased marijuana use, emergency room and hospital admissions related to marijuana, and the environmental cost of marijuana waste. The city and the public needs to know the real cost and consequences of marijuana businesses, including the significant time and expense which will fall to an already overburdened city staff and law enforcement.
Forty seconds.
It's the city's responsibility to have the best interest of the community, not the marijuana industry. Thank you.
Thanks, Barbara.
Next speaker is Judy String. Just need to unmute yourself.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council and staff. Thank you for the report. I wanted to respond to some of the staff information. I hope you understand that Prop 64 was about personal use and cultivation and was not a call to action to commercialize marijuana sales. In fact, only 20% of the cities and counties in the state of California allow marijuana sales, and this is statistic from the cannabis industry themselves. I'd like to respond to the county being in process. As you may know, Board Supervisor Fletcher introduced that concept back in January, but forgot to contact any of the county's unincorporated area planning groups. And they have been responding vigorously ever since they were aware of it, and they are not happy with it. It's the last thing they want in the back country and the rural countries, to have marijuana businesses coming into their area. It doesn't represent what they are, and it certainly doesn't represent what they want for their citizens. I'd also like to ask if we're perhaps forgetting about the years that it took before we realized the role that Big Tobacco was playing in the health of Americans and the costly impact that it was to families, to society, and to employability and economic progress. Are we just turning a blind eye to the similarities of Big Tobacco to now Big Marijuana? Judge Kessler said just 15 years ago, "Over the course of more than 50 years, defendants lie, misrepresented, and deceived the American public. Defendants have marketed and sold their lethal product with zeal, with deception, with single-minded focus on their financial success without regard to the human tragedy or societal cost that their success exacted." She was referring, of course, to Big Tobacco. But after 15 years...
Thank you.
Next speaker, Becky Rapp.
Good evening. I appreciate this opportunity to speak. My name is Becky Rapp. I'm a mother and a youth group mentor, here tonight to voice my concerns regarding the conversation around possible options for cannabis businesses. In no way is it a good idea to expand marijuana into the City of Santee. The marijuana industry is good at making you think that the entire state and county are on board with locating marijuana businesses in their cities. This is not the case at all. Almost 80% of California cities still uphold ordinances banning all marijuana businesses. I'm proud to say that Santee is one of those cities, and would never want to aspire to what National City has done with consumption lounges, as it will be detrimental to their city. It's obvious cities who have allowed marijuana businesses did it for one main reason, to collect tax revenue. This is a fallacy the industry would like you to believe. Although there is tax money to collect, it will never amount to enough money needed to compensate the negative outcomes. Cities have gone down that road and are now facing challenges they never anticipated prior to permitting marijuana businesses: higher crime rates, increased drug driving, and still combating the illegal market, as it has only grown a greater presence in their cities. Recently, medical societies joined together sharing concerns with governments' efforts to legalize marijuana. These doctors state, "We are very concerned that the long-term public health costs associated with hospitalizations and treatment for psychotic addictive disorders could significantly outweigh any revenues that states anticipate would be received from the legalization of cannabis." Thank you.
Next speaker is Erica Leary.
Hi, good evening. My name is Erica Leary. I am a resident of Oceanside and the program manager for the North Coastal Prevention Coalition. And I just wanted to take the opportunity to share some of the experiences I'm seeing up here in Oceanside, and I hope you have the chance to look at the email that I sent yesterday, including the marketing examples of a recently approved so-called medical marijuana manufacturer that was approved with three votes of our council. I shared a video download of their Instagram post, which features a young-looking girl who looks not more than 15, they'll argue that she's 21, with music rapping in the background saying "Dab bitch" as she puts a vape pen in a little glass container and drags on her vape pen. This is supposed to be a medical product, which is what the citizens of Oceanside were told they were supporting. These products are also available to those 18 to 20, as was mentioned. I should share that I've also visited a dispensary in Vista that was featured in your staff report. March and Ash has locations in Imperial Valley, San Diego, Vista, and soon to be in the South Bay. In Vista, they didn't want to sell to those under 21, but when they knew that the competing dispensaries sold to 18- to 20-year-olds, they had to accommodate that as well. People 18 and up can walk in and go online to get a med card if they don't have one when they walk in. Oceanside also promised strict zoning laws, and every applicant that they've approved has been granted locational waivers, including this manufacturer, which is 350 feet from a local church. I also sent you two public health documents. It's important to note that few, if any, of these public health recommendations have been implemented in any of the cities in our region. And if I were you, I would hit the pause button on this discussion until people figure out how to put...
Thank you.
Next speaker is Brittany Blusterfeld. Blusterfeld?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Brittany Blusterfeld, and I'm an associate attorney at Austin Legal Group, a San Diego-based law firm that represents a variety of cannabis businesses in over 25 California jurisdictions. We'd like to express our support and excitement for the City of Santee in pursuing its commercial cannabis program options and commend city staff and its efforts thus far. Based on our experience, we'd like to make a few recommendations for city council to consider moving forward. One, we'd recommend the city allow its cannabis businesses to operate within zones that support similar business types. For example, allowing cannabis retail stores to operate in the city's general commercial zone. We'd also like to recommend that the city follow the state's sensitive use separation requirements, which is to require a 600-foot radius from schools, daycare centers, and youth centers. The state has worked diligently to establish these standards while balancing public health and safety and a sustainable commercial cannabis industry. Lastly, local jurisdictions that have established commercial cannabis programs have not experienced an increase in the risk of crime. In fact, the establishment of cannabis programs displayed trends of property value increase and a decrease in crime. Most crime is generally tied to illegal dispensary operations. We are here to help the city in its development of its commercial cannabis program through any means we can offer. We appreciate the city council's time and consideration tonight with respect to its commercial cannabis program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Kelly McCormick. You just need to unmute yourself.
Good evening, thank you. This is Kelly McCormick. I'm the parent of a teenager and a young adult, and I run a youth mentoring program. For the sake of public health and safety, I hope that you will continue the ban on marijuana businesses. The commercial pot industry brings aggressive marketing, does nothing to reduce the black market, and operates largely unchecked. Contrary to popular belief, the state is not enforcing its regulations on marijuana businesses. For example, there has not been a single minor decoy operation to ensure that pot shops are not selling or delivering marijuana to underage buyers. And the so-called track-and-trace system is easy to circumvent and only used by a handful of operators. Through my work with teens, I've seen their opinions about marijuana change in recent years. The number who view pot as potentially harmful has dropped, yet scientists agree that the potential harm of marijuana is greater than ever due to high THC concentrates. The financial costs of regulating the marijuana industry are far greater than most cities anticipate. The Centennial Institute in Colorado estimates there are $4.50 in costs for every $1 collected in taxes. And as an example, the City of San Diego is now spending $1 million annually for an agency to oversee their regulatory process as their previous framework proved to be insufficient.
Thirty seconds.
There are much better ways for Santee to benefit its residents and improve opportunities for young people. Thank you.
Peggy Walker?
Hello, Council. Good evening, and thank you for your time. I'd like to see the city maintain a ban. It seems we always hear about tax revenues and permitting fees, but that's only half the balance sheet, and what we don't hear about are real and sometimes hidden costs of administration, oversight, tough regulation and enforcement, accountability, policing, and traffic safety. Vista, for example, had to hire a new forensic accountant to handle regulation in that city and unforeseen cost. We don't hear about social issues like the impact on homelessness, which is often drug-related, or medical and treatment costs, or the real impact on kids, on the environment, on quality of life, and community character. Will $420,000 address those issues? I don't think so. I also question assumptions the industry is highly regulated, as I've heard numerous concerns about very lax state regulations, especially testing and a track-and-trace system that doesn't work, about high potency THC engineered to the extremes of the plant, spiking youth use, spiking illegal sales. This happened in San Diego and Chula Vista after legalization, spikes in DUIs, injuries and fatalities, ER visits, and ultimately, a public health crisis. I vote for public health, not pot shops. Thank you.
Meredith Riffel?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. I am so grateful that you, as a city, are so thoughtful in the way you consider new and interesting things that happen in the city, and how you take a pause because you want to make sure that your decisions are the best for all the people. And as you know, the collaborative's mission is to promote a healthier, more proactive community that builds resilient children and families. And because of that, I'm here today to say pot shops are not part of that building resilient children and families. In my work, I've seen a lot of things that happen around mental health connected with pot and also homelessness that connects with pot. And those are the things that I don't want to see in this community. What I want to see in this community is more of the family-friendly, supportive groups that make this community great. The other thing I think of is we don't have any treatment facilities here, and if we were to bring in this kind of element into the community, we would really need to provide the extra law enforcement and treatment options to take care of the problem that we would create. Thank you for considering to keep the ban on marijuana, because I think it's in the best interest of our community.
Shane Duffy?
Hello, everyone. My name is Shane Duffy, and I am a student at the University of San Diego. I'm a senior, it's my last year, and so I'm graduating. And I'm looking to move to Santee after I graduate. So this is a decision that I'm making, and so I kind of, you know, a lot of what we talked about tonight is youth access and youth use and kind of what that looks like. And so I just wanted to give my perspective as somebody who has seen this firsthand, because, you know, like we said, you know, when something's more accessible, more people are going to use. And what that... And what that looks like is people are less motivated, people are dropping out at rates that we have never seen, and people are skipping class. As somebody who's lived on campus for the past four years, documentations for marijuana have gone up by a huge margin, and it's scary to see, it's scary to be a part of. And I, I'm sad to see that my generation and young people are now getting addicted to marijuana and then moving to other harder, more dangerous drugs because of the access that they now have. You know, as, as over the past four years, you know, being a part of the University of San Diego, I've seen different cities around the county make this more accessible, and it's just become more and more of a problem, even in the past four years. And so as somebody who is looking to be a part of the community of Santee, as a young person, I don't want my peers to have that, to have that burden and to become addicted. And it's a scary thing. And so please, please don't, please don't make this accessible. And please, please maintain the ban. Thank you.
Golden Bloom?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, and staff for discussing this issue tonight. I represent, my name is Eddie. I represent Golden Bloom Cannabis Dispensary in the city of San Diego. More importantly, I represent business owners that have owned businesses in the city of Santee for more than 30 years. Our roots as a business partnership are in Santee, they've grown in Santee, and we hope to continue them in Santee. And we highly encourage the city of Santee and staff to make the recommendations for the city and approve the retail sale of cannabis in the city. The retail sale of cannabis in the Santee will set the standard for what safety in our community will look like. We had the honor of hosting City Manager Ms. Best and Councilman Trotter at our location last week, where we gave them an in-depth tour of what our facility looks like, how it operates, and why our safety features are second to none. 24-hour armed guards, rigid entrance and exit requirements, and above industry standard packaging and label requirements make sure that our facility is nothing short of good for the community, good for its residents, and good for the city itself. We support the retail
Thirty seconds.
...regulation of cannabis in the city of Santee. We would much rather prefer the city do it with input from the community than the state burdening us with their requirements. The City Council should be making the rules, and we are happy to bear witness to any regulations they choose to impose for the sake of this community and for the sake of the safety of our community in order to legalize it. I extend an open invitation to all council members, staff, and community members who wish to visit Golden Bloom and see for themselves the type of safety standards we put into place for the sake of our community. Thank you.
Carol Green?
Good evening, Mayor Mento and City Council members. I'm here for a couple of reasons today. In honor of Mental Health Month, I'd like you to know, according to the National Association of Mental Illness, NAMI, there's a strong correlation between marijuana use and the onset of psychosis. Studies also show that marijuana is linked to schizophrenia, bipolar disorder, depression, increased anxiety, and other mood disorders. Unfortunately for me, this is not about studies and statistics. My son experienced psychosis, which was triggered by marijuana use, when his friends told him to ditch his prescribed medication and smoke a little weed to relax. Michael's birthday would be tomorrow. He died as a result of his illness. And sadly, commercialization and marketing sometimes convince people of things that are just not true. It took us more than 30 years, lots of money and lawsuits, to realize the lies the tobacco industry told us. And now the names and the packaging are changed and the playbook is the same, as the marijuana industry tries to convince us with billboards and Instagram posts, marketing campaigns, and beautifully designed websites that are targeting our kids. For many of them, for my son, the results are irreversible. And I know that we have attorneys and business investors that are here to speak in favor, but the community is saying no. As leaders of the city, I implore you to think about the costs of the actions that you take. Please keep the ban.
David Shory?
Your Honored Members of the Council, I am the East County Program Manager for the Institute for Public Strategies, a public health organization that has worked in San Diego County for almost 30 years to address drug and alcohol harm on communities. We understand that cities like Santee wish to enact more local control and envision attractive financial benefits from cannabis licensing, but there are significant potential negative impacts to cannabis operations. Accordingly, should the City Council want to move forward, we would ask you to consider the following components to be included in any conversation around cannabis policy implementation. One, the enactment of a community benefit fee of 10% of gross receipts of all cannabis businesses, with proceeds from this specifically going for substance use disorder prevention and treatment and to mitigate the negative impacts, both social and health, of the cannabis industry. Enactment of fees for cannabis retailers to allow Santee to recoup the cost of issuing permits, administering the program, retailer education, retail inspection, compliance checks, documentation, and prosecution of violators. Also, the enactment of an adult-oriented business ordinance that would fund a full-time compliance officer with the aforementioned fee, along with perhaps additional fees imposed on alcohol retailers, hotel motel parlors, massage parlors, et cetera, to ensure that these police-regulated businesses have adequate and frequent monitoring to prevent public health and safety harms. Prior to operating in Santee and as a condition of issuance of regulatory permit, the operator of each cannabis facility shall enter into a development agreement with the city, setting forth terms and conditions under which the cannabis facility will operate, and each operator should apply for a conditional use permit for each retail location. The CUP application should involve a wide and broad public input so that everyone in the community has input on what's happening with the license. Environmental scans should be conducted for all proposed cannabis retailers in Santee to capture the environment.
Danielle Wilkerson? You just need to unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me? Hello? I'm in favor of legalizing the sale of cannabis in Santee. It is, it has so many medicinal benefits backed by research. It will be a massive step forward for the city and bring good business to town. Please consider all of the benefits the cannabis industry offers to residents as you make your decision. I also wanted to speak on some of the previous comments about their concerns and the dangers of cannabis. I think, I'm not sure the research backs many of those speculations that were made earlier, but I do know that the research does back the medicinal benefits of the plant. And that's all. Thank you.
The next speaker I have is Dan Bigford.
...for cannabis sales, but I am for getting ahead of Sacramento. Sacramento's not going to stop. They're gonna, you know, this last one failed, but they're going to continue to bring forth amendments and so forth to force us into a position that we don't want to be in. So I am for getting ahead of this. A lot of the suggestions of the previous callers can be taken into account and come up with our best plan to go to move forward. Thank you.
The next speaker I have is Devon Julian.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and esteemed Council. My name is Devon Julian, and I'm here representing Culture Cannabis Club. I'm the chief operating officer of the brand, which is currently a license holder in 14 different municipalities throughout the state. First of all, I want to say, great city council chambers, it looks beautiful and great job. It's great to see you all in person. Besides my identity as a cannabis entrepreneur, I am more so a Santee boy through and through. I attended Carlton Hills Elementary School, I graduated from West Hills, and I want to make sure that Santee gets this right. Note on West Hills, I was actually educated and coached by Mr. Ash, so I have held that cup in the past before. My parents still live in Santee. I have family that still runs a business here in Santee just down the street, and my wife is at home planning my son's first birthday at Santee Lakes for the Saturday. So again, I want to make sure that Santee gets it right. As the previous speaker said, I think that you need to get ahead of it, because regulation is coming. The county has recognized that there's major issues with these illegal shops that we've all seen on Greenfield and Alcohone. I've seen them outside of eastbound and Lakeside, Lemon Grove, Spring Valley, all over. And the way to combat that demand, the clear demand that the consumers have, is to regulate it and tax it. Bring it here, make sure that you get input from the community, put it in the areas that are proper for it, and allow us in the cannabis industry to come and bring jobs, bring tax revenue, bring regulations, bring a safe product to the Santee residents, and more than that, bring a partner to the community. I'm proud to stand here today and support this, and I hope that you guys will support it as well. I'm looking forward to Culture Cannabis Club being able to support the great programs and community groups that are here. Thank you for your time.
My name's Cameron. I have lived in Santee my entire life as well, like the dude who just mentioned. I went to Carlton Oaks, I went to West Hills, and I also consume cannabis. I have been in the cannabis industry now for about five years, so I have seen pre-legalization, Prop 215, and the turnover to Prop 64. The two key components that I really urge you guys to take into consideration right now, which I have not heard mentioned at all, is compassion and social justice. If we know the history of this plant, we understand that it has been used to marginalize communities day in and day out. If you look like me, you are six times more likely to be arrested for cannabis in San Diego. If you look like other people of color, you might be four times more likely, five times more likely. And so as we move forward to create a plan here in Santee, I urge the Council to really take into consideration how they are going to impact those communities. What are we going to do to make sure those who have been disproportionately hurt by this plant have a leg in this game? The second is compassion. So as we heard, we transitioned from Prop 215 to Prop 64. My company was giving away hundreds of thousands of cannabis products to patients in need. When Prop 64 happened, we were no longer able to do that. We fought hard, we passed Proposition 34, SB 34, which now allows compassion, which means that we can give cannabis products to those who are in need, cancer patient, things like that. So as we move forward, I would love to discuss those two things in a little bit more depth with anybody who is willing to hear me. Thanks for your time.
The final speaker we have is Alana.
Good to put a face to the name that's been yelling at you the past year. All right. Hi, I'm Alana from East County BIPOC. East County BIPOC is in full support of decreasing regulations of weed in Santee. From a financial standpoint, it will only help Santee. People in Santee leave to go to neighboring cities to buy weed. It's happening, everybody's using it here. It's, no matter what you do, there's a use in Santee. Cannabis has been mischaracterized for years, lumped into the 70s era of the war on drugs, and it's still recovering from the stigma and the laws that have been created against it. It's actually proven to help people medically, and I have my own experience of cannabis helping to decrease my crippling anxiety. Why are we continuing to regulate this plant when 37 out of 50 states have legalized in some capacity and others have legalized it with CBD and other things? I urge you to vote on Option 3 and make a change in Santee. Thank you for your time.
For the speakers, Mayor Mento.
Great, thank you. And thank you for everybody that's made a comment tonight. We appreciate that. We'll go to council comments. Laura, do you want to go first on this?
Can somebody else go first?
Sure. You want to go, Rob?
All right, so I am, I am in favor of Option 3, of just figuring this all out and getting and bringing something forward. As we've seen, we've, we already have had threats of an initiative being brought forward in the city of Santee. We've seen what that has done in multiple cities around the county already, and you're being mandated to do certain things that just really don't make sense as a community when we know that this is the direction that things are going. The county, the county's ordinance in and of itself, to me, is crazy, and I want to make sure that we're putting together something that's meaningful, thoughtful, and will stand the test of time. I completely understand how many people are adamantly against this. I totally get it. Many, they oftentimes are adamantly against alcohol and tobacco use of any kind as well. I totally understand that, and that is 100% their right. However, this is allowed in California. It is being sold in Santee currently legally through delivery, and so it's been done already. We, I think we should just set the standard of what this could do and put together an ordinance that makes it the most responsible ordinance in the county and truly be the gold standard in that. I would like to know more, frankly, about, about all the different, you know, ventures and how that, how that could affect the city of Santee, including lounges. That's the first I'd ever heard of that. I don't even, I don't even know what the heck that means. Like, is it just a place where people go and smoke, or is it a place where they sell it and then they smoke? I don't know how that would benefit a community, but I do, I mean, I want to know more about I was definitely, Mento and I were probably two of the most stringent against this for many years for, I mean, just because, once again, different times. At the time, it was barely became legal in California, and it was almost only California. Banks were not allowed. Who keeps talking? Banks were not allowed, so this was cash and carry, 100%, and now, as we've found that there are multiple banks getting into the game, so allowing the use of credit cards and/or debit cards for this stuff, so that is, once again, decreasing some of the risk there. The citizens initiatives, like I said, are, some that I've read are absolutely absurd to me, and I would rather us write it, write something that makes sense than go that, down that route. People were talking about the inconsistencies with, with the product, and I understand that as well. That's, that was a big issue, and it is a big issue, but it's basically a big issue in the illegal facilities that pop up all over the place, because there is no regulation on them, because they're illegal to begin with. The ones that are legalized do The ones that are legalized do have true track and trace, they have track and trace and placement on 100% of their products, and their products are tested for consistency in the levels of the THC so that people know what they're getting every single time, much like if you had a can of beer or a bottle of wine, it tells you what the ABV is on it. It does the same thing with all these products, so they know what they're getting, and they're not just, hey, this one time it was great, and next time it sends them for a loop, or it doesn't do what they want. It brings consistency to it. Medical versus recreational. I had originally thought medical was a higher standard, and I'm finding, I've found out since that that is so not the case. It's a much lower standard because these cards are basically a joke. They can be attained by anybody online at any given time and just barely have to be 18. And even then, I've seen kids that have them that aren't 18, and they walk into some of these establishments. So I would not be in support of a medical facility. I'd rather do recreational and make it 21 and up for anybody to walk in the door, period. No one under 21. Like I said, deliveries and state challenges are already, we're already being faced with those, and those aren't going to weigh. The cities around us that are doing this are delivering to our community already. I already talked about that. The community benefit fee. Okay, so the $525,000 middle-of-the-road, just go the middle-of-the-road that you brought up, was that considering what you would be proposing as a community benefit fee and taxation? Or is that just off sales tax revenue?
It's basically off the sales tax revenue. Community benefit fee would be something that, in a process, if you wanted to put together an agreement, if you will, then there would be a flat fee that would be charged to each business, and then those could be ratcheted up based upon a number of, you know, a wide variety of reasons. And that would be something different than the tax. The tax is referenced at basically a 4%, 5%, and 6%, and that's where the conservative, moderate, and aggressive types of numbers came from in the staff report. So the community benefit fee could be something that is on top of that.
Okay, so this was given a tax measure proposal being passed.
That is correct. However, Council can always say, if we don't choose to have a tax measure, we want to have our community benefit fee follow that same process, only we're going to ratchet it up on a prorata form. Then you can do it in that manner without going to a tax. However, it's not necessarily as efficient.
Okay. I need more on that, what that could be utilized for.
Whatever Council decides here, we can certainly bring back information on everything.
Yeah, talk about the county's decision on who gets licensed. That's kind of crazy to me. Advertising and marketing standards, another thing that I would want to make sure that we have in some sort of ordinance, so we're not, there's no billboards allowed, no marketing materials, leafless passouts, none of that stuff allowed, flyer-type of things, none of that allowed, so that that's not just being passed around, and, you know what I mean? Minimum distance standards, absolutely, much like one of the callers talked about, you know, the 600 feet from everything. I understand that. Absolutely need to make sure that the track and trace process is in effect. And, oh, and then I also found out that the stores have cameras in them as well that are actually monitored by the state of California. So the state of California is watching them at all times, so when people are saying that there is no regulation of it at all, it's actually they're under monitor 24/7 at any given time by the state because they have to give access to their cameras, and the cameras have had to have angles of every single direction in the facilities except for the bathrooms. And so we want to make sure that these are the things that we're thinking of, and, I mean, even, what are we not thinking of that, once again, like I've talked about with CCAs, that other cities have done and found this, all right, to do it all over again, boy, we really should have thought of this before? Or we overregulated and it made it so cumbersome that no business could even survive, and it was just a big black eye? So looking at all those items, bringing it back to us, something a little bit more concise, but yeah, I definitely want to know more, and I do want to go down this direction because I'd rather be in charge of our destiny than have destiny dictated to us. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Dustin?
Thank you. So I had spent a lot of time with you guys the last couple of weeks, we knew this was coming forward, and like one of the callers said, you know, I went and visited legal, licensed dispensaries, talked to Deputy Sheriff's Association, I've talked to community members, I've done a lot of research on this and trying to get a pulse and understanding of not just what the community is, but also all the regulatory things that have come about in the last couple of years. Since Prop 64 has been passed in the state of California, it's legal for a person of 21 or older to purchase marijuana in the state. So if they're going outside the community to do it, inside the community, what we have found out is that we have two businesses that are delivering here in Santee right now. They're delivering marijuana to our residents, and, you know, we're obviously not getting any tax money from it. That's one of the angles, but it's already happening, and just like Alana said, you know, if you go around the community, you've been here long enough, you know, there's people who use marijuana for different reasons, medically or recreational use, doesn't really It scares the heck out of me, like AB 1356. That is an Assembly Bill that did not pass, that would have came down and said that we have to do this. It's mandated by the state, just like we talked about on several other things, you know, sitting up here, state mandates that we have to do, and most of them unfunded that the city has to take care of, but that it mandate to us that we would have had to put six dispensaries here in the city within a certain timeframe to meet that state mandate, and we wouldn't have a choice of how that happens as much. So it scares the heck out of me that Sacramento wants to come and tell us how not to have local control. So we always sit up here, you know, talking about wanting local control, getting ahead of this. You know, there's so much to this industry. There is a lot. I mean, we're talking about retail locations, mainly the dispensary retail locations, but there is the cultivation and the manufacturing and the distribution. There's so many lakes and layers to this whole entire thing. I don't think we even have a pulse on, you know, a lot of it, to be honest with you. I do hear from the community. I've seen, what was presented earlier, the Prop 64 was passed by the community in Santee on a positive, a little over 52%. I think this is an issue that is probably a 50/50 type of issue in the community. You've got half of the community that doesn't want, you know, necessarily this to come, and we have the other half that does. But, you know, our job is to figure out, you know, what's best for the community and, you know, deal with the regulations the state, you know, has coming forward to us. The recreational is 21 and up. Medical is 18 and up, so I'm not sure of what you said, that we could not have 18-year-olds walk into these places because 18 is allowed to be purchased medically.
No, you don't have to be medical.
We can do just recreational. We don't have to do medical at all, Sean? Is that...
So on all these questions, we're going to bring issues back to you. Because, I mean, there's so much, as you just said, that, and we have a lot of the answers, but we really want to just hear from you, and then we're going to bring a lot of things back to you. So I don't want to give you an answer that...
Yeah, fair enough. I just, I heard him say that, and I wasn't sure if that's even possible. Like, if we allow a retail location, we would have to follow what the law says. You know, that's what they're, talked about, obviously, that, you know, the citizens initiative too. That also scares the heck out of me. If you guys have seen what's happened around the other, I think there's three other cities in the county, that there's been citizen initiatives that have also been passed by the citizens. So, I mean, just like we had with the referendum and the term limits, you know, we had a citizen initiative here in Santee on the ballot just recently back in November. Same scenario happened in three other cities in the county, where the citizens went, got their citizen initiative, got their signatures, and they got it on the ballot. Well, whatever that, when that passed in those cities, that became law. We didn't have any chance to go back and change whatever that law is. That became law, and those cities are stuck with that. So that scares the heck out of me, too, that we don't have a chance to write our own law, write our own way of taking care of this business, this, whatever it looks like there. The tax stuff, I mean, it's all stuff we figure out going forward. There's a lot here, Mr. Mayor. It really is.
Great. Rob?
Needless to say, I'm 100% against this. Everybody keeps talking about citizen initiatives. We could write the best law in town, and they could do a citizen initiative and get rid of it. So who are we trying to con on that one? That one's ridiculous. Go to Slide 3, please, about the federal government. In the meantime, I'm going to keep going. I would like to have another workshop, now that we're doing workshops, on health and enforcement. Because if this goes down, I want to make sure everybody knows what they're voting for. Studies have shown that adalys and smoking pot end up with schizophrenia, and we need to understand what we're voting for. This is not some little, oh gee, everybody's fine and there's no problems. There are major problems with this stuff. This is very, very bad for people, especially if they're young. I sat through a, five years ago, I sat through a seminar on this. I suggest we get those people over here and talk to you, and then you can figure out what you think of this. Because, boy, once you hear this stuff, it's ridiculous. Secondly, you know, it's, oh, we'll just pass the law and then we'll, you know, work on it. No, listen, I've got a better idea. Let's go ahead and work on this enforcement. We were taking our son down Greenfield, grandson, down Greenfield, and right across the alleyway from Greenfield was daycare that we dropped him off at, and then there was pot shop right across the way. So the 600 illegal pot shop was not there. So they're putting illegal pot shops in there. So when we, if we do this, and it sounds like we will be doing this, I want to make sure that we take their building. It says right there, uncertain, well, where's the federal law? It remains illegal on federal level. So everybody goes, and the federal authorities were coming in and threatening to take buildings at one point. So if that's the case, if it's illegal federally, I don't care what the state says. We can make any law we want, as long as it refers to the federal law. And Sean, you can help me on this one, but basically, if a landlord knowingly rents to an illegal pot shop, he's violating federal law. Is that correct?
It's significantly more complicated than that.
Okay, well, it is, but he is. I have no problem finding him. I have no problem going after him. So that's not, just so you guys know, El Cajon currently, right now, does not allow pot in there and marijuana in there. There's a very nice one, from what I understand, I've never been in it, half mile outside Santee. So anybody that says they don't have access to this is lying on that one. When you get into the citizen initiatives, I already brought that up, they are fully available, no matter what we do. They can pass their own initiative, and we all know that. So we had our prop N slam down our throat, and it took over. I talked about the daycare. I talked about the federal. You know, if you guys really want to do this, have the guts to put it on the ballot. Put a tax on it, and let's put it on the ballot. Everybody keeps bragging that they won 52% on the ballot. Well, let's put it on there. Let's put a 7% tax on, and let's let them vote on it and see if they do. If they do, hey, more power to them. I don't have a problem with that. And again, I want to make sure that if we're going to do this, that pot shops that pop up illegally, we don't have to sit there and wait three months to shut them down. I want to make sure when this thing comes in, we shut them down, then we go after the landlord for illegally renting to those people. So let's make sure if we're going to do this, let's do it right, and let's go hammer some of these people. And just so you know, marijuana is actually a drug, and marijuana is actually, causes cancer. So everybody goes, oh, cigarettes are terrible for you, but so does marijuana. So let's look at that, and you can laugh all you want, it's a fact. So the bottom line is, we need to deal with this, and we need to understand what we're doing. The problem with what's going on right now is everybody's going, oh, yeah, it's going, we got all these dealers here saying it's great, it's that. The bottom line, it's going to cause a lot of problems, it's going to make the sheriff's job a hell of a lot harder right now, and then we're going to have a lot of mental health and homeless in here. So you guys better plan on paying for those, too, for your $500,000. I'm done.
Good, thank you. Laura, do you have anything for us?
Yes, thanks. I wrote some notes, so I'm going to be skipping around a little bit, but, you know, I think it is important for us to understand what's coming from the state and the bills coming in. And just because something doesn't pass in the first round doesn't mean it's not going to pass eventually. We've all seen that time and time again. They do, they throw a bill out there, test the water, see how close it gets to passing, tweak a few things, run it through the next cycle. So when a state passes 3,000 bills a year, this stuff is common. So a glimpse into what our state values are, it's legal in our state, more than half of our citizens support it, and, but let's look at during the pandemic, who was eligible for a vaccine before law enforcement? Cannabis employees were. So that's an insight into what the state values. And then cannabis was declared an essential business during the pandemic. So when restaurants were closed, cannabis shops were open. I think it is important to create our own destiny in these decisions. It's legal in the state, it's sold all around us, and it's being used by our citizens. So in 2018, a couple of really unique things, really unique things happened. One was I watched a documentary called Murder Mountain, and I really recommend that documentary to all of you on Council. It actually has a San Diego connection, but it's the story of Humboldt growers and really how there was a growing society, and then legislators got involved and decided that there should be medical marijuana use, but the legislation created a whole new slew of problems, pushed a big portion of the business underground, and it's called Murder Mountain for a reason, and it's a very insightful documentary. The other interesting thing that happened was during my campaign, knocking door to door, speaking with constituents in, a lot of seniors in my district, I was hesitant to say how I felt about marijuana because even in 2018, it's, you know, I grew up in the generation where, you know, Reefer Madness and all kinds, and, you know, Just Say No, or Just Say No, I guess that's the Nancy Reagan era, and, you know, a lot of, just, that's just the way I was brought up. So that was my perception. I just automatically thought older people would be against it, and found out that they were actually for legalized marijuana, many of them that I spoke to, because in their older age, they have aches and pains, they realize the benefit of marijuana use, and it helps with those medical issues, and they wanted easier access to it. So I found that surprising, and I've remembered that. I do appreciate all the comments, though, that were said today, and we had a lot of people that spoke tonight that aren't in favor, but one gentleman, I put him down as a maybe, David, I believe, and I also, I think we all received a one sheet about principles for protecting youth, public health, and equity in cannabis regulations. So some of the things that I think would be valuable in Option 3, one, eliminate the cannabis kids menu, limit the number of... the cannabis kids menu, limit the number of retail outlets, require buffer zones, which it sounds like we already have that in the plan, if we were to move forward. Preserve, preserve local controls so communities can innovate and learn. Prohibit conflicts of interest in regulatory bodies, advisory committees, and for regulators and prescribers. Assure that not driving, assure that not driving increased consumption is a system goal. So basically, our goal is not to create more users. Require prominent health warnings in stores and provide safer use information to consumers. Standardize dose concentrates, so it sounds like the THC level, have it standardized like the ABV level. Prohibit the use of flavor additives or limit marketing of flavored names known to attract kids. Require warning labels on advertising and prominent pictorial warnings on packages. Use a specialized business model for retailers, which means that they wouldn't sell other products beside the product that they're selling. Even back in 2018, it was still a cash industry, and I do remember law enforcement talking about, that was one of their biggest challenges with the cash-only industry. So now that the banks are getting involved, you can just see how the tide is turning, not only in our state, but nationally. And I think, you know, our council really wants to keep local control of decisions like this, and make sure that the state doesn't decide what this looks like for us. So I do support option three, and coming back with more information so we can make an informed decision.
All right. Thank you very much. Rob?
Thank you. I do want to just address a couple of quick things here. I'm sorry, but I take offense to, who are we trying to con here? I'm not trying to con anyone. A citizen's initiative, it could absolutely pass, and yes, it could pass, but the reality is, it would pass because the absence of the ability to do it now. Once you have something in place, that removes a great number of that voting population for a specific product. If you're talking about no more growth, that's, every single, every single time you have a development, it's going to be no more growth, no more growth, because that's a new development every single time. This is one time, one product, one industry, that you're saying initiative, once it's done, once it's, once it's available, a huge segment of the population is covered there. And adolescent smoking is already illegal. It's, it would continue to be illegal. We're talking about 21 and up, not adolescents, we're talking about 21 and up, adults.
Who buy alcohol currently for younger ones.
And that's still illegal. So creating more laws that are for illegal acts is still, that are still illegal, is silly. It's already illegal. And it's, now, do we have enough enforcement? That'll give you, we can do more with enforcement, but illegal is already illegal. And frankly, I didn't say it earlier, I probably should have started off with it, the thing that spun me around on this whole thing was my mom. 76 years old, was in a car accident over 40 years ago, and has been taking over-the-counter painkillers, or pain medicine, you know, Aleve and Tylenol and Advil and all that, like candy, for 40 years, and it's screwing up her liver, because there's just the pain of her neck, and the doctors can't find anything, can't figure it out, how to fix it, without taking the chance of paralyzing her. And the only thing she's ever found that's worked was CBD, not smoking cannabis, but CBD that has THC in it, and utilizing that, that has THC in it. So it's not, you can't just buy it anywhere, you have, you have to go to a retailer, a legal retailer, to get it, and that is the only thing that's alleviated and has no side effects whatsoever on it. There's no issues with her liver, there's no issues with anything else, which a huge portion, a huge portion of the sales in these stores, which we neglected to mention earlier, are CBD products, that's, what, 46 or 47% or something like that on average? So these are things that do have a medical purpose to them, and I, I just see it, I see it personally, I've seen it personally. Thank goodness I don't need any of that stuff, so it's not for me, but...
And I've seen the other side personally, the health benefits, the health risk personally. So let's talk about that, and that's all I'm saying. You guys want to do this? Let's bring on some medical experts, and let's bring on the sheriff's department, and let's bring on some, some people to say the bad things about it, too. Right now, it's just a nice little cute display on, oh, we, how great it's going to be, we're going to all make a half a million dollars a year, or more. And it's like, all I'm saying is, you guys want to do this, that's fine. Do it, put it on the ballot, and put a tax on it, let's put it on the ballot. Have the guts to do that.
And I think we will definitely be hearing from our sheriff's captain and sheriff's department on this, at, at length, when we bring this back. Obviously, we need to.
All right. Well, we've heard from an awful lot of groups, community-based groups out there, we've heard from some folks that are in the industry, we've heard from council. And my feeling on this is that we definitely need to have more conversation. There are things that need to be talked about. We talked about the federal government and the decriminalization, and as of January, there was discussion about putting another bill through Congress. However, there's no concurrence yet on how that's going to meet in the Senate. Also talks about, you know, President Biden. He's not necessarily for legalization unless certain conditions are met. And so even, you know, the president and vice president haven't actually agreed on what they would like to see if it was, you know, brought before Congress in the Senate. So, so what we need to do is, we need to work at our level to make sure we do what's right. And it depends on who you talk to, whether it's the right thing or the wrong thing to do. And so whether you agree with me or you don't agree with me, we both have an opinion, and we are both entitled to it. A great example, you know, Rob, you have, you have some very strong arguments here, but, you know, Ron, you have some very strong arguments also. You just disagree. Well, you know, that's what democracy's about. We're going to find a way to either agree on one thing by majority, or not to agree on something by majority. I want to hear more from the medical industry. I spent a long time, I talked to somebody this past week about this, who's a former law enforcement officer, who is now in the business of cannabis. And, you know, I spent a long time in law enforcement, and my job was hooking and booking people that were in, carrying any kind of drugs. And so I asked him, how do you reconcile in your own mind, where your job was doing the same thing, and now you're in this cannabis business? Because it is a delicate thing to talk about. And he said, well, he had to become educated on it. Well, one thing I did is, I became educated a little bit on marijuana and its effects medicinally by, in 2010, serving on the city of San Diego Medical Marijuana Task Force. So Rob's right. As long as you have CBD and things of that nature for medicinal uses, it's a very good thing. Okay? I haven't seen any reports yet that say people are becoming addicted to CDB oils, if I've said that right, oil or creams or other things of that nature. So that'd be a great thing to bring forward, to find out if there is a study on that. I have a hard time with the idea of recreational use of marijuana, you know, or cannabis, and whatever form it is, whether it's, you know, edibles or otherwise. So what I've told the industry that I've met with is that I'm opposed to this. However, my job is to make sure that I don't always bring in my personal feelings on this, that I have to listen to what the experts say. I've also told the people that are absolutely opposed to this, the same thing, is that I'm going to listen to every bit of expert opinion on it that I can find, and then I'll make a decision. And I'll make a decision that's based on law, because that's what I, that's just the way I am. I follow the law on this stuff. So, so I guess I, at that point, I can't say whether I'm for or against it. I am, what I'm for is finding out more information. And I want to make it clear, this workshop tonight is not the end of this. This is, we're not voting on to do something tonight. What we're doing is, we're getting all this stuff out in the open, so that we can talk about it. Whether somebody believes that, oh, you know, the world's coming to an end, or somebody says that, oh, well, if we don't do this, the world's coming to an end. So differences of opinion. And what we'll do is, we'll work with staff on bringing another workshop forward, and it may be more than another book workshop, but especially as we start to open up a little bit more, and we can get people in here to our chambers, because I think having these conversations face-to-face with people who are in this business, whether they're consumers, or whether they're sellers, or whether they're people just opposed to it. But to look somebody in the eye and understand exactly how they feel about this is what makes a difference. And, you know, and, and you know what? If there's somebody on this dais, at the end of the day, and after, after every position has been brought forward and recommendations are made, says yes? Well, then, if it's a majority, we go with it. If it's a no, it's a majority, we go with it. And we expect that the people that are in our community to respect us for doing that, based on all the information that we get, because that's what's fair, and that's what's equitable to everybody. Fair, honest dialogue and investigation. And that's what I'm promoting here. So I guess that will take us to the next agenda item. Okay, that would be item number nine, recommendation from the Salary Setting Advisory Committee regarding compensation for the mayor and city council. Annette?
Good evening, memento, council members. This item is the recommendation from the Salary Setting Advisory Committee regarding compensation for the mayor and the city council. This slide shows the changes that the Salary Setting Committee is recommending. As you can see, there is no recommended, there are no recommended changes to the salary, but there is a recommended change to the auto allowance of $100 for the mayor and $50 for council. There is also a recommendation for a $10 increase to the tech allowance for the mayor and a $40 increase for the council. The chair, Dean Velasco, is here to respond to council questions, if you need more information on how they arrived at these figures. The annual cost of the committee's recommendation is $5,722. That's including the auto and the tech.
Dana, come on up. Congratulations on being the chair. Maybe.
Did you miss a meeting?
No, I did not miss a meeting. So do you have any, any questions on how we came to this conclusion?
Well, I like to hear some of the dialogue, because, quite frankly, what we've done for many years is, we've always gone by what our regular employees get here. If they get a raise, we get a raise. They don't get a raise, we don't get a raise. And so, so to see it not here, I think it's nice that we, you'd want to bump us up in, you know, auto allowance and technology, but I think I need to understand a little bit more how, how you come to that, because this council is very engaged in the community, do a lot of traveling. Quite frankly, 40 bucks doesn't do a lot for us. But I also understand that we have a budget to worry about. So how did you guys arrive to some of your conclusions here?
So some of the conversations that took place on the committee were, there were some feelings that the budget and coming out of COVID, that the, nobody could agree on, on a salary increase. And, and there was different folks that thought that we need to, we know that we're coming out of this pandemic, and there's going to be a lot more work and a lot more engagement with the community and all that. And some of the folks just spoke about possibly not increasing the salary because of the year passed, not doing as much as years in the, in the, in the past before that. So it was, it was an interesting dialogue, and trying to convince, or trying, trying to listen to other folks say that you guys don't deserve a raise, and, because you didn't do much last year, basically, in a nutshell. And trying to say that, I argued, and so some folks argued that they actually did more, because there's a lot more engagement with a lot of the, the climate in our, in our city, and, and in, just in the country in general. We definitely spoke about the, the auto allowance, because I think there's going to be an increase of, you know, going to meetings, now that meetings are going back full force, and driving around and all the things you have to attend. And, and the tech allowance was, was spoke in great detail, because everybody's using technology more. And although that, some, some cases that your technology costs the same, whether, you know, it's all you can eat for X amount of dollars, but I, I think what was brought up was the needing actual equipment now more than before, for all of the virtual stuff we're doing. But it was brought up to, we wanted to follow what staff, historically, it's, it's, we usually recommend what staff is, staff receives as a raise, you guys follow that, but that just didn't, didn't get enough votes to move forward, so.
All right, thanks. Do we have any speaker slips on this?
Yes, we do, sir. We have one. Dan Bigford?
Okay, Dan, come up. Don't go too far, Dana, we might need you.
Well, I, for one, am concerned about no salary change. I think that your salary should be bumped up on a regular basis. It's very hard to catch up later on. City of San Diego's getting a real deal. You know, they're not really paying you that much money for the amount of work that it takes to be prepared for this city council. So, you know, I would rather see that, that there's a, maybe based on the Consumer Price Index, a regular raise that happens. Salary Setting Commission could say, well, we need to bump it up a little bit more than that, because we're behind the industry standard, if there is one, for city council people. But I like that they're bumping up the auto allowance, gas is going up, fuel, or auto maintenance is going up, the technology, we're using more and more of it. So, you know, I'm glad to see that that's bumped up, but I would much rather see, in addition to that, keeping our, our city council paid.
Competitive?
I'm not going to say well-paid, because it's just not.
How about competitive?
You guys can do better. And you do, do a great job for the cheap, cheap price of $1,728. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Anybody have any comments, sir, to make? Or Ron?
The, the one thing that the technology is, you know, I mean, I'm buying a gigabyte just to make sure that I don't freeze on the computers. I mean, that, that's, we're having, we were having to buy more, you know, and then, you know, the cameras and lights and things like that, that we bought, we never got reimbursed for that stuff, we just ate, ate it. So I am kind of glad that that went up to $90, and I think that's probably more like it. You know, if, that's something that I want to make sure that we kind of stay with, because we are having to, as long as we're doing anything virtually, we're going to have to make sure that we have adequate equipment there, so.
Rob or Ron? I mean, Rob?
Yeah, I, I like the increases there, because they're non-perceval. So it's not, it doesn't go into pensions or anything of that nature, so much like we did with other staff to, you know, to give little bumps. But, you know, we've discussed this in meetings in the past, that it really should be closer to what is done with city staff, because for her... Because for many years, there was no increase whatsoever, and then all of a sudden, even though everybody else did receive multiple, you know, increases every year or two, and then that gap became even larger and larger and larger, and you can't go back and make that up. It's, it looks, it looks atrocious, it's, it's, it's just not, it's just not good policy. So I, I do think that there maybe should be more of a policy towards keeping it the same as what general staff does, and also finding other, I mean, if there are ways to do things non-perceval, I'm totally fine with that as well, because those are long-term costs that's, that will be long beyond us and our tenure sitting up on a, on a seat here. So if we can mitigate those as much as possible, you know, that's, that's a good thing, long-term for the city of Santee. But the reality is, yeah, things do cost more, things do go up, and if you don't stay on top of it, like every other fee that we've had, that we've never increased, to try and get caught up when you're finally realizing, oh, we've gone way too long, you, you just, you can't, you can't do it. So that's my opinion.
Yes.
Yeah, I concur with the salary. It should be congruent with the, with the CPI increase. It's, you know, the cost of a burrito costs the same for us as it does for any other staff member, you know, it's, it's not any different. So any increase to cost of living is the same across the board, or equal to, you know, our staff's increase. I believe there's a cap of 5% we cannot exceed anyway. Is that correct? Marlene?
So the way this works is that you have options under the charter, or you have options under state law?
Okay.
You have now received the recommendation from the Salary Setting Committee, and that gives you the flexibility under the charter to set whatever you feel is appropriate. You can accept the recommendation, you can reject it, or you can do something different.
Gotcha. The, you know, the city council here also does a lot more, like I'm looking at the other cities that are ahead of us, like Oklahoma, and I believe Oceanside both have planning commissions that they, that they don't, city council doesn't have to sit through those meetings and do that. What Santee we do is we have a couple other additional obligations, other than some of the other cities that are, you know, slightly ahead of us in their, their salary rate. And the other thing I was, you know, when Dean mentioned about, and actually Ron kind of mentioned with the technology thing, is that we have three newly elected members here. You know, myself, you, who just got reelected, and Laura, even to go on the council previously. The increase is for the current council going forward, not a reward for the previous. You know, it's, you know, it's, you don't reward somebody for, you know, what they were here two years prior to. It's, this is a salary going forward. That, you know, it's just because you were, you were elected before and you came back, you know, got reelected by the people, it really shouldn't matter. It's, this is going forward.
Well, my biggest complaint goes back to the city of San Diego, and I watched this year after year after year when I lived, I worked there and actually even lived in that community. And every time it came before the city council, they're like, oh, well, we better not give ourselves another pay raise, because we may not get elected next time. Well, you know what, then after about three years or four years, then they're saying, oh, we need to like a 10% raise to do exactly what you said, catch up. And boy, were people really irritated or annoyed with that. And we, we've pretty much done, like I think Rob said, we've looked at all of our fees and we've tried to keep up with them also. Now, granted that last time, two years ago, when it was suggested that I get a 52% raise, and we rejected that, absolutely a little bit higher than what we should have. But I'll tell you what, after what we went through last year, this council with, you know, the pandemic, the insurrection, handling other, you know, obstacles that came along, and to still be able to be have a, you know, work with staff and make sure that we were competitive throughout this county, and to post good numbers when it came to our fiscal responsibilities, that wasn't because we were sitting at home not doing anything. And I think it's a little annoying to me, maybe I should maybe take that part away from my, my psyche, but it's annoying to me when, you know, I appoint people that I want to make good decisions and have good conversation, and they say, you didn't do anything. Well, you know what? That's just not acceptable to me.
Well, they weren't here.
Well, that's just it, you know, and, and I don't know, did staff actually make a recommendation for a pay raise for the council? And that was rejected? And what was it?
Did staff?
Yeah.
I do not believe staff made a recommendation in our committee meeting for...
Just kind of let you guys fill it out and see what you want to do?
Well, I, I think they provided us plenty of information on what you, the benchmarks between Santee and other cities. We had actually a tremendous amount of information this time, it was really well put together packed. The conversation on the newly appointed commission, I think, just, it was, it was different than years past, because we spoke a little bit about previous salary setting committees, and how, how our recommendations were in previous times on trying to catch, because there was a certain level of, of folks talking about how you, we don't think your, your, your pay is in line with what you do. We talked a lot about the planning commissions and some of those other areas, and we brought up a lot of that. But some of the newer members just, they were kind of stuck in what they experienced this last year, and however their personal experiences were, and how maybe they thought that, that you guys didn't do as much. But there was a lot of conversation on how much we thought, there was quite a few members that were speaking about how much more you actually did this last year during the pandemic, and with, you know, with weekly updates and videos and everybody, you know, contributing to that, all that mess we had. And it just, there was enough votes to actually put forth, even following the, the staff raises for, for you folks.
What are the staff, what's staff getting?
Is it one and a half this year?
At this point, staff throughout the city is getting a one and a half percent CPI increase, and then a 1% stipend.
A stipend?
Correct, sir, a bonus, if you will, so that does not go, it'll be paid in two allotments, so for tax purposes, however, it will not be perceval, and that's the reason we're trying to go to that process.
Rob?
When was the last time that, that we had a recommendation?
Two years ago.
Two years ago?
2019.
And so was there, was this the only increase for staff, was the one and a half percent? In two years?
Oh, no, that I'm talking about for us.
I know.
Yeah.
But you understand what I'm saying? So is this the only?
No, they've had a two and a half, one and a half, one and a half.
Since?
Next year. Next year will be one and a half.
You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So if you're looking at one and a half, that was?
Yeah, well, I had to ask, because I couldn't remember.
That's what's coming forward in the current, the coming fiscal year, as you requested.
Okay. Well, that's what I would recommend, is that we, we would get a pay raise the same as staff, because that's the way we, we want everyone to understand that staff, you know, performs, you know, and we perform, and that, you know, not, we're not really one entity is better than the other. We all deserve the same. I think we've kind of tried to go off of that theory, you know.
Parity.
Yeah, parity, parity, thank you. There would be a parity increase. So that would, so I guess that would be my motion, to have parity increases for council, and adopt the rest of the Salary Setting Commission recommendation.
Is that going to be for this year and next year?
Well, yeah, because we don't come back for another two years.
But, you can make the motion for next year.
Well, that is.
Do you understand what he's?
Mayor Minto, can you clarify the, the exact motion, that way Tim knows too.
Well, from what I understand, that there's a one and a half percent increase scheduled in July for staff. And I'm not recommending a stipend for us, though.
No.
Just the one and a half percent raise. And then, then we come back for negotiations again, and for the next budget cycle for pay raises for staff, right?
No.
So what you're missing?
I guess I'm missing. The, so what you're saying is, one and a half, one and a half, plus a stipend.
Let me see if I can clarify. The, the recommendations come forward every two years. So if you're asking what staff will get in the next two years?
Yes.
Staff will get a one and a half percent CPI and a 1% bonus, and a one and a half CPI and a 1% bonus, with a cap, that bonus, pardon me, the bonus or the CPI can go up based upon the upper level of the COLA, and the max it can cap out is three, if I recall correctly, Tim, is that correct?
So the annual salary schedule adjustment is 1, 1 and a half percent for the upcoming year and the following year? The stipend is subject to the CPI adjustment. It's a minimum 1% stipend, with the possibility of going up to 1.5%.
Okay.
Depending on CPI.
Got it. Okay, so my motion would be to, you want to speak first?
Just, just, maybe I'm confused here, because, it was, go ahead, Ron.
One and a half this year, one and a half next year, and that's it.
Right.
I think the question is, when you say this year, do you mean the coming fiscal year?
Yeah, July 1st.
And then the coming fiscal year, '22, '23. Twenty-one, twenty-two.
Just puts us behind yet again, from what was done, because it was two years ago that we've had, since then, we've had more increases for the staff. So if you, that's what I'm saying, you do it every two years, you're always, and you go, okay, well, we're going to do one, we're always behind.
Right.
If you're going to have parity, you have parity.
Yeah.
Hence the reason that the committee, I mean, that's, that's fine, if they wanted to talk about doing more, but I think you have, you should set a standard, just to, if you're going to have parity across, then we have parity across, and that's a standard, unless there's a, you know, something that happens that says, now, we need to go backwards for some reason. But you...
Yeah, so, so you're saying that...
We're already behind one of those bumps.
Well, we're not, we're not going to get retroactive pay, that's for sure.
Of course not. No, no, of course not.
Going forward is what we need to worry about, so.
Can I try to provide a little bit of clarification?
Please.
So part of the reason we come every two years is that there's something in the law that says you can't do it for an existing council, you have to do it after the election, right? So, Tim, correct me if I'm wrong, but two years ago, what we did was, we said, council would get a raise of X amount starting the fiscal year, and then the next fiscal year, they also got a raise. So although we made the decision two years ago, you did get a raise each fiscal year, which is consistent with, I think, the mayor suggesting right now.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then that's, that's, maybe I was accurate, like it, yeah.
Well, I'm glad it was you this time, not me.
Hey, no problems, that's why we have incredible staff like this to keep us on the straight.
So that's, that's how I would move, is that we would get the parity raises. The only thing I'm not comfortable with, though, is the stipend raise.
Oh, yeah, no, that's fine.
So I would just leave that one out. For instance, it's not really that big a deal anyways, based on what we get. So, does that make it clear, does that make it clear?
No, you're, you're clear. And your motion is clear, I think. You know, just, just...
About $10,000 more or what?
No, the mayor included the recommendation already in his motion. So, but just, this will all come back to you as part of the budget, that's the point of the recommendation I wish to make, right?
You're not adopting it, you're not actually increasing it now, it'll be done in the budget
process.
Okay, that's my motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Yeah, it's like a $25 a month.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like a $25 a month increase.
All right, I have a motion second, and you said we didn't have any speaker slips, right?
We already heard the speaker, that's it.
Forgot where we're at. Okay, let's prepare to vote.
Hold on.
Mr. Mayor, one quick comment. Councilwoman Koval has dropped off, so you don't need to contact her at this vote.
Right.
Can we vote?
Yes, we can vote.
You mean on the machine?
It's, I don't know if it's working, is it working?
Yes, sir.
Well, let's, please...
Let's try it.
Please prepare the vote.
Where are we voting?
On the machine. Let's see if I'll vote.
Oh, okay. On your machine.
I want to play with the new choice.
Please vote.
We'll lock the vote. You have to press lock, right?
Yep. Lock it.
Yes.
Your final answer?
Final answer.
You want to phone a friend?
He's already sleeping. Cool, look it up. That's cool. Just don't wait for the words.
The vote passes with four ayes. Councilmember Koval is not present.
Thank you, Dana. You guys never want to have to give us a recommendation, we never take it, right?
Yes.
That takes us to item number 10, and that's a resolution authorizing the execution of a master equity lease agreement and related documents with Enterprise Fleet Management Inc. for the phased replacement of the city's light duty fleet per source well contract.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'll try to, try to keep this fairly brief, you've had a fairly media agenda this evening. The item before you this evening requests your consideration of the Enterprise Fleet Management Vehicle Leasing Program. Next slide, please. This program is being suggested or brought forward in, in conjunction with the city's light duty fleet. The light duty fleet consists of about 30 passenger cars, trucks, and SUVs. The average eight of the fleet is 10 years old. Almost half the vehicles are more than 10 years old, five of them are actually greater than 20 years old. Santee's practice over a number of years has been to buy vehicles, hold them for as long as we can before replacing them. Not surprisingly, what comes with older vehicles, higher maintenance costs, reduced fuel efficiency, increased, increased emissions, lack of current safety features, less than ideal cosmetic appearance, and upon trade-in, a lower trade-in value. Next slide, please. So a couple of options to, to point out towards refreshing or moving towards a newer light duty fleet. First would be to purchase new vehicles. That would take about $1.2 million in current, current dollars to replace the 30 vehicles. The option that's before you this evening is the Enterprise Vehicle Leasing Program. Next slide, please. Okay, so the Enterprise Vehicle Fleet Management Program, which includes the leasing program, is being increasingly used by a number of public agencies in San Diego County, the city of San Marcos, the city of National City, both use the program, MTS, the San Diego County Office of Education, a number of local school districts, and then a number of public agencies in neighboring counties also participate in the program. In total, there are about 80-plus public agencies in the Southern California area that use this program. Next slide. Okay, under this program, it uses an open-ended lease structure, which provides a little more flexibility than a typical personal vehicle type of lease. Under this structure, there are no mileage restrictions, no wear and tear charges, no termination, early termination penalties. The city gets many of the benefits of ownership of the vehicles. We're able to equip them with aftermarket equipment, including the graphics for the city, lighting, utility bodies, and the like. Interest costs under this program are benchmarked at the three-year treasury yield plus 350 basis points. In plain English, that would be today about 3.85% interest rate built into the lease. And the city retains the equity in the leased vehicles. What that allows the city to do is, upon the termination of each individual lease, we can either cash out the equity, get paid for it, or the proceeds get rolled back into the program, and that reduces future vehicle lease costs. Next slide. So some of the program benefits to point out, the ability to replace more vehicles utilizing less upfront capital is a, is a clear benefit. We are proposing a five-year replacement plan, a phased replacement plan, so over the upcoming five years, the 30 vehicles would be replaced. Two were planned for the current fiscal year's budget, we would add another five for the next fiscal year, and each... That would be a thing of the past. Another benefit is Enterprise's inventory and access to manufacturer product. You know, just the sheer magnitude of Enterprise's size, the number of vehicles that they purchase on an ongoing annual basis. It'll lead to a much more efficient procurement process. It'll save city staff from doing formal bids or trying to identify other cooperatively or formal bids done by other public agencies that we can piggyback on. It will lead to shorter delivery lead times. Enterprise can, their cost to purchase these vehicles is lower than the city's, again, by nature of the, just the number of vehicles that Enterprise is purchasing on an ongoing basis. Under this program, manufacturer incentives are passed through to the city, and Enterprise, again, has got a great opportunity to identify opportunities for the city to acquire hybrid or other alternative fuel vehicles. The program comes with a dedicated account team. They help us navigate what's out there, opportunities for the most cost, for the most cost-effective vehicles in any, any given class. They know the best time to get into the market to purchase certain vehicles, and they also know the best time to sell certain vehicles, so they can help us maximize the proceeds on the backend at the termination of leases. And they'll just be a resource to help us proactively support the ongoing replacement plan. Next slide, please. As a couple of items or a handful of items I've previously mentioned, benefits include, you know, increased fleet reliability, reduction in maintenance costs, increased fuel efficiency, decrease in emissions. You get the benefit of the current safety features and, you know, better cosmetic appearance for the city's fleet. Next slide, please. The plan would be to participate in the Sourcewell Cooperative Contract that was awarded to Enterprise, Enterprise Fleet Management back in July of 2018. This was done pursuant to a competitive solicitation process, and it's consistent with the Santee Municipal Code requirements. Next slide, please. With that, staff's recommendation would be to adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a master equity lease agreement and all related documents with Enterprise Fleet Management, Inc., for the phased replacement of the city's light duty fleet pursuant to Sourcewell Contract 060618-EFM. And this authorization would remain in place until June 30th, 2026, unless terminated sooner.
Motion to approve.
Do I have any speaker slips?
No, sir.
Great. Do I have a second?
I have a question.
A question?
Yeah. Tim, and I'm sorry, you may not know off the top of your head, but do you have any idea what, what annualized savings we'd realize out of this, or maybe five-year, 10-year savings?
So, you know, I mean, those are, those are challenging numbers to come up with. So we've looked at fuel costs, for example. We expect about a 33% reduction, about a one-third reduction in our fuel costs translates into about a $30,000 annual savings on the maintenance side. That's a, that's a little tougher one to, to get the arms around, but we've looked at some numbers that reflect, I mean, about a, closer to a 70% reduction in the ongoing maintenance and repair costs for the vehicles on an individual basis. It'd save the city closer to $30,000 to $40,000 on an annual basis.
And, but are we increasing with the lease payments?
We are increasing with the lease payments.
So is it a wash at the end of the year, is it?
It's, well, then, I mean, if you factor in the cost of purchasing the new vehicles.
Exactly, yes.
We actually, I mean, the models we've looked at show that we come out ahead at the end of the day.
Okay, that's what, that's what I wanted to do.
It's a net positive to the city.
Thank you, that's exactly what I was looking for.
With the added benefits that the program brings.
Fair enough. I second the motion.
Great. You know what? Did you figure in whether there was a cost for using electric vehicles or not, or hybrid vehicles?
We have, we didn't rule that in. It is definitely available through this program. The cities that we've talked to are definitely doing at least the hybrid vehicles. Many of them just don't have the infrastructure, like Santee doesn't have yet either, for the electric vehicles, but it's, those vehicles are available through this program as well.
Okay.
But we didn't, didn't run that into the mix.
I knew in my case with a, you know, I can drive all, if you get the right amount of mileage with a hybrid, you can drive all over Santee for free, basically, if you have solar and you have the, the setup. And then, once you hit out, once you hit outside, then you, you know, then obviously you're going to be using gas, but I fill up once every two months, so that's something we all look at.
Yeah, but you stay home all the time.
No, I don't.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Please prepare to vote. Please vote. I don't like this system.
Yeah, nice toy.
It works. Motion carries with four ayes.
You know, if we can work on in the future where if we have a council member absent, we could actually say absent. That way it's recorded probably more accurately than waiting for a vote.
Yes, sir.
Okay, just a recommendation. All right, thank you. That did pass unanimously to all those present. That takes us to item number 11, resolution awarding a contract for the purchase of emergency medical service supplies on an as-needed basis and Life Assist Incorporated per national purchasing partner, DBAMPPGOV. Fire.
Mr. Mayor?
What?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and a pull.
Second.
I have a second. Do we have any speaker slips?
I have a quick question. How does this compare to normal?
No, sir.
What do you mean by normal?
I mean, is this kind of like what we do all the time?
Yeah, this is a pretty routine business. It's just up for that.
I mean, it's not like 100% over in it.
Oh, no, as compared to what we did before, Tim would probably be a better.
Yeah, I mean, the annual total that's referenced of not to exceed $160,000, that's reflective of the COVID environment, so it's, it's, it's higher than it used to be pre-COVID.
Can we get any money from COVID money?
Anything that's COVID-related, we absolutely will pass through to the federal programs.
Great, thank you. Please prepare to vote. Please vote. Good job, chief. Thank you.
Motion carries with four ayes.
That takes us to item number 12, report on the status of Mesa Road in the City of Santee and paved surface conditions.
Oh, my goodness.
I know for you it'd be way too high, but.
I'd need a step stool.
Yeah, but Wayne O'Leary, you're right.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. At a previous city council meeting, staff was asked to return with an informational item on the status of Mesa Road and its surface conditions. We had received correspondence from property owners who utilize an undeveloped portion of Mesa Road to get to their homes, and Scott Johnson, our principal civil engineer in charge of land development, will give that information to you tonight.
Another new choice.
He's just showing off now.
As Melanie had mentioned, I'm here to provide a, a update or a report regarding the request from the adjacent property owners on the maintenance of the roadway. Next slide, please. Yeah, several property owners on Mesa Road have requested that the city maintain a paved surface beyond the area currently maintained by the city. City staff has informed the property owners that the roadway south of Mesa Heights subdivision, the TM 8808, has not been accepted into the city's road system.
Let me stop you for a minute. I need to ask Sean, do I have a conflict of interest since this is a cross, cross-section of my, or a cross-intersection of my, where I live?
Is it, we, is it within 500 feet? Because we look, I mean, we look at that and we didn't.
I think that it could be within 500 feet.
Then I would, I would recuse myself.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't.
Rob, you're going to have to continue with the meeting, and I'm going to recuse myself. I'll step in the back.
Thank you, Mayor.
And have another cup of coffee. Thank you, sorry.
Okay, no, that's, all right, and that is TM 8808. It has not been accepted into the city's road system, and therefore, the city is not required to maintain the roadway. Next slide, please. Here is an aerial of the area in question. The homeowners on the east side of the road are requesting that the city maintain the road south of Mesa Heights subdivision to the Mesa Trailhead access gate shown on the exhibit. Note that the county of San Diego owns a property hatched in green westerly and southerly of Mesa Road, including the area west of the Mesa Heights subdivision, just south of Big Rock Park. This area is part of Mission Trails Regional Park. Next slide. All right, Mesa Road history. In 1884, the county ordered to open land for public use as a road of unknown width within the ex-Mission Rancho through El Cajon, as depicted on Old Survey 119. For the most part, the condition of the right-of-way was, and still is, a dirt trail that was created prior to the use of motor vehicles. It has been asserted that the acceptance of the map by the county was a complete acceptance of the road into the county road system. However, the facts, as I will describe, do not support that assertion. Records of surveys have been filed with the county showing Mesa Road as a traveled road with a width described as found old existing fences approximately 40 feet apart. Next slide, please. Streets and Highways Code, Section 941, provides a process that a county or a city accepts roads into the county or city road system. It requires a county board of supervisors or city council to cause those highways, which are necessary to public commerce, to be established, recorded, constructed, and maintained. The board of supervisors or the city council must also accept the roadway into the county or city road system. Next slide, please. Prior to the city's incorporation in 1980, Mesa Road was being maintained by the county from Mission Gorge Road to approximately the southern limits of the Mesa Heights subdivision south of Prospect Avenue. This is documented by the San Diego County 1981 Road System Map and Index. At the time of the city's incorporation, all interests of the county and to any county highway which had been accepted into the county's road system pursuant to Section 941 were vested in Santee and constituted city streets. Next slide, please. All right, Mesa Road was originally included in the circulation element of the city's general plan as a collector roadway south of Prospect Avenue connecting to Lake Murray Boulevard. Next slide, please. The city has issued encroachment permits for utilities within the right-of-way to ensure that the utilities would not conflict with the planned future improvements of the roadway. These utilities included a high-pressure SDGNE gas transmission line as well as a Padre Dam sewer main. The sewer main was permitted in the early 80s to be placed in a 15-foot-wide, smooth-graded access road within the right-of-way. Next slide, please. In 2003, the Mesa Road connection to Lake Murray was eliminated from the general plan 2020 update. The current mobility element, as shown here, the roadway classification for Mesa Road is collector residential to serve the potential extension of the roadway to serve developable property. Once a roadway is built to the city's public work standards, likely through private development, it could be accepted into the city's roadway system. Next slide, please. As I mentioned before, the county owns the land south and southwest of Mesa Road as part of Mission Trails Regional Park and claims fee title to the portion of Mesa Road from the southerly boundary of Mesa Heights to the Mesa Trailhead of Mission Trails Regional Park. After the city's incorporation, as part of the Mesa Heights subdivision, the developer Lifetime Homes was required to dedicate and construct Mesa Road to, to meet the city's public work standards adjacent to their site. This included acquisition of right-of-way from the county. The acquisition was obtained in 1990 through eminent domain and fee simple for public street purposes paid at the developer's cost. Next slide, please. So in conclusion, based upon our review, the county road system maps and index from at the time of incorporation and based upon the roadways accepted since the city's incorporation, Mesa Road south of Mesa Heights is not part of the city's road system as a city-maintained road, and a fact the county still claims fee ownership to that portion of Mesa Road. As such, the city is not obligated to maintain that portion of Mesa Road as a maintained road in the city's street system. If that portion of Mesa Road were accepted into the county road system, nothing in government code requires a city to improve that affected area into the city's street standards. And that concludes my report, and I'm available to answer any questions.
All right, we have one speaker on the subject. Madam City Clerk, can you please provide the speaker with access?
Yes, Alan Swan, Swan.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm a long-term Santee resident, and I've had to deal with the deterioration of the road for the last 22 years. About 18 years ago, I contacted the city, and they came out and they put down a temporary asphalt in that whole section. Two years later, they came out and they repaired it. So in my thought that it was going to be on the agenda to be improved, well, it never happened. So I, I came back to the city, and next thing I know, I'm being told it was a private road because it was never been dedicated as a county road. When, and when the city was incorporated, and it did not become a city road. Well, I went down to the county, and the county said, absolutely not. That's a county road. They dug up the dedication, it was an 1884 county board meeting. It was dedicated as a highway from La Mesa to El Cajon, the whole section. So it is a county road. I went and found other, I found 1889 survey map that shows it clearly called a county road. I found a USGS map showing Mesa Road was one of the main thoroughfares. There's three thoroughfares into the El Cajon Valley. So this is not just a small, little extension road. This was a major, major road at one time. I took that road documentation, the dedication document, down to the city and was told the county didn't know what they were doing. Now, how do you, how do I argue with that, that kind of logic? It just, it just, you know, I went back to the, the county, and county said, there's not much more we can do. It's not our road. It's their road. It was during, during incorporation, it became a city road. I, I have two asks. One is that the city council, please review the dedication documents and the California Highway and Street Code, which clearly indicates that any road that was dedicated a county road becomes a city road upon incorporation. Number two, that you improve the road before someone is injured. I've seen many near accidents with cars trying, trying to avoid potholes. And I guarantee if somebody's hurt, it's the city that they're going to go after. It's a city road. And I don't know where, where Scott gets his information, but the county does not own that. That is a road. It's been a road since 1885. It is not county-owned property.
30 seconds.
They own the property up to the side of the road. They do not own the road. I went and talked to SDGNE, when they put that, that gas line through, they had to go, they used the same document to show that this was a county road, that they could use access and get access for their pipeline. So I'm, I'm not sure where, it, it sounds like this one, Scott's information is very, very one-sided towards the city, and we've been paying our taxes, and I'd like to have my taxes.
All right, I'm sorry, sir, but yeah, it's, three minutes is the, the limit for speakers, but to his point, maybe Sean, you could add a little color to this because, you know, yeah, it sounds a little he said, she said here.
Well, I mean, this has been going on for a long time.
Since the 1800s, yes.
Well, that, that part is, it, that document, all it does was acknowledge that this was a potential public highway, and so there's no question about that. I mean, the staff report addressed the same point. So it's really a question of whether it, this portion, which is about, it's, I think it's about 1,000 feet, if you've been out there. You know, you were, the paved road ends, and then there's essentially a gravel road now. The question is whether that was ever accepted by the county for purposes of maintenance as part of their county road system. And, and/or, did the city ever accept it? And nothing that. report addressed the same point. So it's really a question of whether it, this portion, which is about, it's, I think it's about 1,000 feet, if you've been out there. You know, you were, the paved road ends, and then there's essentially a gravel road now. The question is whether that was ever accepted by the county for purposes of maintenance as part of their county road system. And, and/or did the city ever accept it? And nothing that staff has found, and in fact, the county, a surveyor has provided information that's documented in writing saying they never accepted that portion into their circulation, their system, right? They've never maintained. And in fact, Scott just walked you through the fact that the area that's now paved, but was previously not paved, right, for the Mesa Heights subdivision, the developer and the city had to acquire that property from the county. They had to pay for that. And so this is not, you know, it's not absolutely crystal clear, like all these things that go back in history, like CMPs and things like that.
Yeah.
But I mean, I, we've reviewed staff's analysis carefully. We've talked to the county independently. The information that the staff has provided to you is the same information that we have received. And we do not find anything to indicate that this, that segment was formally accepted by the county as a maintained county road, accepted into their system, therefore didn't come into our system automatically upon incorporation. And this council has never formally accepted it. The council could try to do that. We would have to then work with the county to acquire the rights to it. There's a lot of issues there. So, I mean, the long and the short of it is, there's, there are different facts that have been alleged, that's been alleged for a long time. Staffs analyzed that and presented the report to you, and we support the conclusions of the report.
So several years ago, when I believe it was a church that was going to take over in that little spot there, that was one of the items that they would be, they would have been required to, one, attain the property from the county.
Right.
And then secondarily, bring it to current roadway standards, correct?
That's correct.
So even in that documentation, it stated that they would have to attain it from the county, not from the city.
Yes, ma'am?
There is, there is existing 40-foot of right-of-way that is, that is mapped. It's right-of-way, but it's not an accepted roadway into the city's roadway system. And, you know, so we'd have, so yes, at that point in time, the street was a collector street, which is wider, where now it's a residential collector. So there would be a requirement to acquire additional 20 feet, possibly 10 on their side, 10 on the county's side, depending on the grades, depending on the curves, you know, to be able to get the roadway in with the existing topography. But yes, there would be a requirement to get right-of-way from the county. And similar to the Mesa Heights project, it was done through condemnation.
Scott, the 60 feet you're referring to, that's from the center of the road. Would that be to the back of the sidewalk then? Because we would have to put sidewalks in on both sides of the road, or is that to face a curb?
Well, today, there's no sidewalk.
I understand, but you're talking about, you're telling me you had to, you need 10 feet more on each side to get to 60 feet, right?
With a residential collector, it's a 40-foot of pavement within 60-foot of right-of-way. So it's 10 feet on each side.
Okay.
So the paved area could possibly fit within the existing right-of-way that's there.
Okay. One other point, just to be clear, that is in the staff report. Even assuming that the county did accept it, that Scott's pointed out the law that says there's no obligation for the city to unilaterally improve it to city road standards, which is essentially the request that has previously been made. And so even if the speaker is correct that somehow it has come into the city at some level, that may be a maintenance question. But in terms of improving the road and paving the road, there's no, there's no legal obligation to do that.
Yeah, they're, you know, done loans all over the place, and there are oftentimes private roads within, within cities and counties and jurisdictions, and they have to be privately maintained.
That's actually another question I had. Is Ram Haven Lane a city street, or is it a private road?
Well, that's a private, private lane.
Okay.
Okay. Any other council questions?
I think all he can do is sue at this point and see where he ends up.
Unfortunately. All right, that's, staff recommendation has been, or not recommendation, sorry, staff report has been received. There's nothing else we have to do at this point. Thank you, Scott. Let's bring back the mayor, and what's our next item? Or was that the last one? Public comment. Just go to public comment while the mayor finishes his coffee and comes back out. Madam City Clerk?
Yes, so the only public comment we have is from the speaker that we couldn't get on earlier. So if Delina Weinfurtner is available now?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
You have three minutes.
Sorry, I don't know what happened earlier.
No problem. You have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. The Racial Justice Coalition of San Diego and the East County Justice Coalition have been working hard to close the gap on COVID-19 vaccine inequity in East County. As of today, over 50%, in San Diego County, over 50% of the white population have received at least one vaccine, while only 30% of the black and indigenous population have received at least one vaccine. Several factors contribute to this disparity, including lack of easily accessible information from trusted sources, transportation struggles, and the number of vaccine clinics available. Will the city of Santee join the cities of El Cajon and La Mesa in committing to contributing to the progression of this goal to vaccine equity by June 19th, AKA also known as Juneteenth? Perhaps the ComTalk Committee can agree to working on this goal. Please follow up with the coalition to find out more information on what is needed to progress in this goal in East County. Thank you.
We can address that pretty much right now, because we do vaccines here even at city hall, correct?
We host city, our county sites here at city of Santee. We're doing one Sunday, as a matter of fact.
Yeah, and in the past, we've had several hundred go through here, right? Several hundred people?
I believe several hundred per day.
Yep.
That we've had, and we've had three or four days, so upwards of 1,500 probably is, would be my guess.
Okay. You know, I didn't get the name of that caller. Can you refresh?
Delina?
Delina, are you still on the phone or on the line?
Yes.
Okay. Did you hear what I was just saying about we are participating in bringing vaccines to everybody in our community, or anybody really wants to come to our city hall to get vaccinated?
Yes, that's perfect. Do you know if there's where to go to find out more about that information, or?
Yeah, actually, right, we used to go through CalVax, but now it's, you can get an appointment through MyTurn. And then, do we have on our website information regarding that? I think we do.
I believe we do. We can make sure that it's updated with the MyTurn.
Yeah, so we're, we're in this with you, okay? We want to make sure.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, so we're doing our part to make sure we get a lot of people vaccinated, and we don't turn anybody away unless they're sick.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, we also hosted an outreach program where we went out to the community, and some of our firefighters sat with iPads with the link open to get, get people registered right there that were having difficulties with the technology. So we...
Great, great. You know, we are doing a lot here. We're doing that through our, our fire department, because a lot of those guys are trained. And bringing people down there. So if you want to send us a, an email or something, so we can kind of give you a little more up-to-date information, that'd be great. You just go on the website and send it to, you know, the fire department.
Ma'am, until we will reach out to her, we turned it off because we were getting feedback. So we will reach out to her.
Okay. Well, we're going to reach out to you and make sure that you know what we're doing here. And if you have any more recommendations for us, we'll be happy to take those at the time, make sure that we're not falling short of what we need to do. Thank you very much. Any other speakers?
No further speakers.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Well, it's been a long night. So city council reports. Ron, anything?
Can't remember.
Can't remember. Let's see, Dustin?
No, sir.
Rob?
Yeah.
That's all right. Now, this is kind of strange going this direction. I'm used to sitting down there and just...
At the next city council meeting, I'd like to have another consideration of a letter to be written yet again in, in support of opposition to HR 127. It's a, it's a, in my opinion, it's kind of a, a little bit of an attack on the second, our second amendment. I, I think that Congressman Isa will be in opposition to HR 127 to begin with, but I would like, I'd like to, for him to know that the city of Santee is behind it. I mean, some of the items that it, that can, that are contained in the, in the bill are things like to obtain a license to possess a firearm and ammunition. Individual must be 21, okay, instead of 18, it's 21. Undergo criminal background check, undergo a physical evaluation, successfully complete a 24-hour training course, and prove that they have an insurance policy annually at the cost of $800 a year. The psychological evaluations must be conducted by a psychologist approved by the attorney general, and would include, include, or include evaluation of other members of their household in which the individuals reside. I mean, the cost of getting these things done and the bureaucracy by which to get it passed is just astronomical to me, and I think it's really just an attack on, on constitutional rights. So if we can discuss that at the next meeting, so we can potentially write a letter of, in opposition of this to go to Congressman, I would appreciate it. That's it.
Great, thanks. And I don't have anything either. Marlene?
Just a couple of final notes. Don't forget, we have FIDO days coming up on Saturday at Woodland Vista Park and Town Center, pardon me, Mass Park. And I would like to welcome Captain Christina Bavincoff to her first real-life city council meeting.
Completely forgot.
Just a note, she's been around a while, but this is her first live-in-person city council meeting.
It doesn't get any easier.
It don't get any shorter either.
I'm hoping some of them might be a little bit shorter.
Yeah. Yeah, we're going to fire you next time. So, okay, was that it? City Attorney?
Your report.
You don't want to get in on any...
No, I don't.
Okay. Well, in that case, that means we have no closed session. So therefore, that means we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for all your time and patience.
Good work.